It is 6:30 PM on May 15, 2018. I call to order the Morrisville Town Council Work Session. To start off, I'd like to bring Todd Wright to talk about Town Center Core Demonstration Project Public-Private Partnership Work Session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Since January, when you all approved Armada Hoffler as the preferred developer for their Town Center Core Demonstration Project, staff has been working with their team to assist them with their due diligence, their financial analysis, and all their pre-development work. I'll be honest, it's been a learning experience for me. I've learned just how much work goes into the pre-development phase of it. Really, the purpose of the work session tonight is to give you a chance to meet the Armada Hoffler team, to learn more about their public-private partnership experience, and to get an introduction into some of the concept design that they've been working on. And also, we'll talk about the next steps. Really not looking for feedback from you tonight, but certainly if you have any questions at the end of the presentation, really glad to answer those questions. So to get started, let's introduce the team that's here tonight. In the very corner, on the far end down there, if you raise your hand, is Chris Odell. He is the Executive Vice President for Armada Hoffler. And to his left is Andrew Holt. He is part of the local team here. And then at the far end of the table down there is Bob Bistra. And then beside Martha here is Dennis Radke. And they're both with Built Form Architect. So with that said, I will turn it over to Chris.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, as Todd said, we are very appreciative of the time this evening and enjoyed working with Todd and staff so far on the project and look forward to continuing that effort. And so we wanted to take a few minutes to just introduce ourselves, who Armada Hoffler is and what we bring to the table, to the team, and give you a little idea of where we're headed with the project, some of our thoughts on the project, and answer any questions, brief questions that you may have related to the path that we're all on. So currently, we're working on the project in the Town Center Core. And the concept, as we are sitting today, is approximately 216 multifamily units, about 15,000 square feet of retail, and about 350 cars located in a structured parking garage. And this site sits adjacent to the Wake County Library that's getting ready to break ground here in the Town Core. So Armada Hoffler is a real estate investment trust. We've been a public company for five years, but we are a 40-year-old company. We are very adept in public-private partnerships. We've done over 26 public-private partnerships through the Carolinas up through Virginia and Maryland predominantly. We've developed over 10 million square feet of real estate for public-private partner projects and have, over the course of our four decades, developed over $2 billion of real estate. Here's a list of our public-private partnership projects, a sample list. And you can see we've done projects as small as $9 million under a public-private partnership, all the way up to $600 million at our signature project, our Town Center of Virginia Beach. This is an example of what we think is our expertise in the field of mixed-use real estate development. This is our Virginia Beach Town Center project. This is a 14-block development that we've been working on for 18 years. We are down to, in the initial concept, we're down to our last two parcels. And then the three and four that you see over on the other side there, that's an existing shopping center that we recently acquired and will look to redevelop that as well as kind of, we call it Town Center East. But the initial phase, as you can see, that's before on the left-hand side. It was a bunch of single-family homes and trees and one existing office building. And that's Town Center as it sits today, tallest building in the state of Virginia. There in the background, that's a Westin Hotel and Condominium Project and has over 200,000 square feet of retail, over 1,000 multifamily units, almost a million square feet of office. It's an economic engine for the city of Virginia Beach that they're very happy with. Here locally, Armada Hoffler has been in the Carolinas in the past. Here locally, some of our most recent work is the Whitestone Apartment Project there on the left in Durham, down by American Tobacco. And on the right is the city center, one city center high-rise that you can see going up if you travel anywhere near downtown Durham. That's the tallest building in Durham as it sits today. The project itself, when we were looking at the opportunity to come and work with the town of Morrisville, we looked at the project in regards to its location, it's centrally located, related to the other economic drivers in the region. It's had good, strong population growth. It's got a good quality of life for its residents. The town's priorities kind of matched our vision for public-private partnerships. And there's a shared value of what we're all trying to create and then the end goal of the development. We feel like we're all kind of on the same sheet of music. So the initial phase of the project as presented through the RFP process was what was called the Demonstration Project. We call it Phase One. And as you can see, it encompasses about a city block, as we would define it. And the, excuse me, the Wake County Library sits there on the corner on the traffic circle that has just started construction, I believe. And the approach we took to the multifamily was to flank the Jeremiah Street side with the multifamily and have the front door of the multifamily kind of face out to Jeremiah through the north courtyard there. And then on the internal face, on what will be the new Main Street slash Carolina Street, we've got ground-level retail with multifamily units over top of that. And then we've hidden the parking garage between the two in an effort to minimize the impact of a large parking structure. Just some of the other floor layouts, as you can see, the ground floor there to the left with the lobby and amenity space kind of tucked into that public courtyard. And then, as I said, over to the far right there, you can see the units that will sit on top of the retail level. Some conceptual images, we're just now starting to get our imagery and our visual context put together. We've been spending a lot of time, as Todd said, with the due diligence, just investigating the market, investigating the gaps in the market, investigating the right unit types, unit mix, unit size, the density of what's around us and the demand for retail and all those things. So we've gotten past that stage, and so now we're really starting to dig into the visual context of the project. And this are some of our early sketches and thoughts. Next steps, as we move out of the due diligence phase, would be to continue to work with staff to develop the memorandum of understanding, which would be a baseline document whereby both parties would proceed forward into the preparation and execution of a full development agreement. We would continue to do our pre-development work. We've done some of the due diligence onsite, and we would continue to do our modeling and our master planning for the project. And our timeline right now has us breaking ground sometime in the spring of 2019. So that's our timeline. This is a more enhanced image of the project and how it would sit on that corner. And as we know, there is additional city or town-owned land heading north on the page. And we're trying to make sure that what we do in this corner will be complementary of what may happen in the future and trying to be more thoughtful along those lines. With that, I think we can move on to some questions. Yep? Okay, yep, okay. Go back to that one, yeah? Okay?
I have a couple of questions, just, but I'll let my fellow council members chime in on their thoughts first. Jerry, do you want to start for us? Is there anything you want to? Okay, no pressure. Does anyone have? I think Steve. Okay, Steve?
We want to thank you for coming here. It's great to meet everybody. We're very excited. I don't have any really specific questions, just would like to learn, as we go through this process, your experience in terms of where you've seen success in these public-private partnerships. Has it been the way we're doing it, like a demonstration, where we make core investments in the infrastructure and then use that as a way to look at where, you know, businesses and retail may come in? I mean, since we've started talking about this, I've been approached by breweries and other kinds of homegrown businesses that are already, and I don't know how early it is, but we want to meet Armada. I think made through Todd Wright, a couple of introductions, but, you know, I just want to get your observations of that. When I look at Cary, they've had a lot of success when they made investments in, a lot of investments in their infrastructure on Academy Street, and then the Fountain Park, and then the Cary Theater, and then the Arts. And those things built upon themselves. And the current mayor, Harold Weinberg, always says that they just can't keep up with the amount of requests they're getting. So it's not really a question. I just would like to get your guidance to us tonight of where are we and how do we drive the bus forward now to that vision?
Sure, thank you. You're exactly right. The most common role that we see municipalities participate in these public-private partnerships is through the infrastructure that's needed to densify a site. We're trying to create a vibrant 18-to-20-hour environment, right? It's not just a retail center that's going to open up at 10:00 in the morning and close at 10:00 at night. It's not just an office building that's going to be active from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 PM. We're trying to create a full environment, a full vibrant community, if you will, on this project. And to densify a project, you're having to create more infrastructure to support all the internal workings of all these different uses. And so that is the part that typically we see municipalities participate in the most. So yes, you folks are on the right path there as far as you're thinking of where you should invest your dollars and your efforts. It's funny, you make the comment about seeing something happen early and watching the interest happen to it that could potentially happen here. When we built Town Center, the first building we built was an office building with a parking garage. And on the ground floor was a, or is a California Pizza Kitchen on one corner and what was a Red Star Tavern on another corner. And we had all the grids of streets in, but there was no other development there. And we would sit in the restaurant at lunch, and we would see people just walk around the block. It's like they knew it was coming, and they were just coming to check and make sure, you know, nothing new had happened since they'd been there the last time. They would just walk the block, and we're like, what are these people doing? But they sensed the energy, and they sensed, you know, town's making, the city's making a major investment here, and something big's getting ready to happen. So the fact that people are already coming to you and saying, "I got a feeling I know what's coming," is a good sign.
All right, we have a new mic system. None of us are used to this yet. We have to hold the button. So this is really exciting, and I'm glad you left this slide for last, and we can keep it up there because it is very promising and very exciting. Just to, I guess my, well, I like the concept with the garage, how you've kind of moved that parking deck. That looks really good, quite frankly. And that's not how we had, we all talked about it. But I like this concept very much because it looks like the parking deck is going to be pretty, not hidden, but it'll be camouflaged a bit. So like that very much. I guess really, most of my questions are kind of about the details and the timeline moving forward. So are we going to talk about that a little bit or, because that's more exciting to me?
My goal is that we would brief to you a memorandum of understanding in July, which is a little bit further out than what I originally anticipated. But having learned how much work goes into this, we're certainly on a good track, and we are starting to get into the details of the MOU now. So I am hopeful that we can brief to you a MOU in July.
I think we're sort of in our mind, I was thinking we'd have about an hour for this, so 45 minutes, I think we have some time to sort of give a little bit of feedback of what we see. If we have any concerns, I think now would be a good time to share them so that they don't go too down, far down a path. Like you mentioned, that this is a different concept than we saw from DFI. And I'd love to hear everybody's thoughts about that, whether or not this is okay or if we really were married to that other one, we need to let them know now.
So, no, I don't think, I don't think I was married. I'll talk for me. I wasn't married, and I thought that's kind of the conversation we had. We wanted to be flexible so that you all would also be flexible and bring us what you thought was the best concept. So I'm pleased with this. I guess, you know, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the retail and what you expect to go there and what you envision that becoming as we move, and how easy that will be as we move forward.
Okay. I think maybe you had some similar questions.
Sure, thank you very much, and I appreciate the presentation. So I'm going to be honest, I'm going to say I'm not as excited probably as my colleagues, and just for reason. If I want to go out here in Morrisville, if I want to go grab something to eat, I'll go to Park West, and I'll go and grab a bite to eat. If I want to go bowling or something, I'll go to Cinnabon or go and watch a movie. When I think of our core downtown, I mean, it's very, I mean visually, it looks very nice, but then I think of the antiquity within the houses and stuff around it, and, you know, it appears just on this concept, you know, very modern with a lot of our antique historic homes all around it. And I'm kind of curious how that's going to incorporate. But more importantly, other than the library, it looks great for the, you know, the residents who will live in the apartments. But even here, what is going to draw me there? And the reason I say this, I, with what Councilmember Rao said, if I want to go out for a night, I will go to one of those breweries in downtown Cary. But it's because I can walk around, it's got a cool vibe, it's got, there's some element of eclecticness about it. And I hope that we can incorporate something like that that would make more people than just the folks that live in the close proximity want to come. Because if we're making it our signature piece for Morrisville, you know, that stamp on Morrisville, right now, just looking at it, it's, you know, a few stories of apartments sitting above some retail and a parking deck. And the thing that concerns me about the parking deck, as I'm looking at this just today, is 216 units, and most everybody that lives here has two vehicles, and only 350 parking spaces, which would include parking for the retail at night. So just doing the math, it makes me a little bit concerned. I know it's not a done deal right this moment, so I'm, and I know it will work out, but those are the, some of the things that I'm hearing. And I'll just say this, from a constituency perspective, people I think are interested. I think they need to see, because the feedback that I get is like, if we already have a place like Park West, why are we doing it again right in the middle of Morrisville? So those are just my feedbacks. I mean, it's beautiful. I just, I want to get excited for why I would come a mile and a half to go there instead of just going to Park West and grabbing a pizza or sushi or something.
Sure, I understand that. So, and you're exactly right. This block on its own, I think that, yeah, there you go, this block on its own is not going to be something that's going to pull people in to the development. And this project really needs to be thought in a broader scheme and mastered out through a concept and a marketing plan and a business approach. And that's part of, to Todd's point, he's trying to be a little bit soft-spoken in what we've been working on. And that's been a lot of what we've been talking about, is how do we correctly approach the project? Because it's not just this block. It's got to be thought out cohesively. And so we've been talking about different marketing themes for the project, and why is somebody going to want to come here? What are we going to put here that's going to drive?
So you're talking about like Phase Two and Three and Four?
Right.
So it's not just Phase One that's going to, I thought, I thought...
We're here, we're here to talk about Phase One, but you can't, you can't look at this project in a vacuum, right? So we're trying to make sure that whatever we do today, hopefully, we're the folks that continue on in the project. But at the end of the day, we're trying to do what's right by the town and make sure that this isn't done in a vacuum, that it's done cohesively in a manner that will support the bigger vision that the town is trying to get to. Does that make sense?
And thank you for that. So I would be looking then, if that were the case, I'd be looking at...
Can I give you one example?
Sure.
So one of the reasons we put the parking deck there is because we're experienced in structured parking and day-night uses. And the worst thing you can do is have parking decks sit empty because they're not doing anybody any good. So by putting the parking deck in the center there and shifting it, if I can get my little burnt bean to work, and shifting it into the center of the project, it can now support day uses in the next phase, okay? So being out here on the corner would be too far to support that. So we're trying to think holistically and strategically about how this all starts to work together.
So what about nighttime in this particular piece right here? So the retail that is there, and once everybody gets home at night, where would people park?
Yeah, so again, we have, we have metrics that, and it's a lot more detail than we have time for today, but we have metrics that we expect ratios for parking for multifamily based on vacancies and people being out of town and things like that. And then we have ratios that we expect to have for retail and all those kinds of things. So at the right time, when we're working with staff, we'll make sure that everybody's comfortable between on-street parking, parking lots, and parking structures. We have adequate parking. Okay?
So can I just, oh, can I just follow up to that? Councils in the past have, we have a concept plan for the whole area to include the town green and probably a future public facility, whether it be a gym or a cultural arts center. So you're looking at that full concept that councils have talked about in the past then, and how to incorporate all of those uses for the greater area?
Yes, where are the other uses that are envisioned for this location?
Okay. And I would, I would, to Jerry's point about the parking, have we calculated the population that's within the walking distance of this area to? Do we know what that population is today?
Within walking distance, I don't know that we've got that data.
Okay. I also just want to acknowledge that we do have Eric Thomas in the audience from DFI. We really appreciate him being here as well. Mayor Potam Skowronski, would you like to share some comments?
Okay. Can you hear me now? A couple of questions. First of all, I appreciate the diagram, the visual, but there are other elements that we're thinking. So it does look a little residential-heavy from a concept. And I've always envisioned the downtown as a gathering place. And we may never build Phase Two. So if we have Phase One, what does that do for our initial mission of being a gathering place, a center, the heart of our town? And I don't see a gathering place. There's two little courtyards for residents of the units, but I don't see that, I don't see a place where we can gather as a town. That's one thing that I need to understand. Is the town green adjacent to this phase, and is that agreed? Do we have that agreement?
I don't know that decision's been made yet, but let me ask the question, you know, potentially to get all of what you all want in this first development. Are you open to development being done beyond the demonstration area in that first block, in the first phase?
No, not at this time. I am focused on the demonstration project with our constraints. I am open to seeing some artistic illustrations and other priorities, but I really think we need to focus, otherwise we're going to get scope creep, and we're going to potentially override our budget expectations, which we set forward for this project phase. So that's my caution. The other is the parking. And I understand parking. I understand that you have daytime visitors, and then you have evening residents. But what Morrisville lacks is parking to support events, gathering, and other things. And we get high volumes of people, and we never, ever have enough parking. We talked in great length about leasing spaces for the library or for events or for town uses. And this ratio of 350 parking spaces for 216 units doesn't give us the capacity I was expecting. I'm not a traffic engineer or anything like that, but simple math says that there's going to be two cars on average for every unit. It's just, especially if these units are more expensive, you're going to have people wanting to have cars. And we don't have any buses right now in Morrisville. We're working on that, but there is no mass transportation in the town, and that's also going to put pressure on the parking in that area. So, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, would you like to share some thoughts?
I looked at the plan. I have two questions about, one about the parking. I think I was vocal about the parking part, is this clarification that 216 units, 15,000 square feet, 350 is the structured parking or the, what about the surface parking? Do we know how much that is?
There is, I believe, 30 spaces, 30 to 35 spaces in that lot. And then on-street parking, I believe, was about another 20 spaces.
20 spaces, okay. So around 50, you can say, all right? Because I know...
50 if you have minis.
Okay, so the last calculations, I think, I hope you guys are also agreeing, is like 1.5 is the calculation that you guys came up with, is equates to 324 is the parking for 216. And then 75 or 60 is agreed for the Wake County Library out of leasing. So that comes down to 399. And then 50 is, and I don't know the commercial, there were some calculations of how much the commercial would be. So I like the concept of keeping the parking lot, the structured parking in the middle, which kind of works both phases. But the question I have is, if we got to come up with our thought process of where the town green is, and if there is anything, how do people go into the structured parking? And also, I'm not able to see this side of the view because there's going to be an opening from the structured parking into the Jeremiah Street. Is that still...
There's an entrance here, and there's an entrance on that side.
Not on this side?
No, not the Jeremiah, no.
So there was some concept there, right? I saw one that basically goes into that side too, right? If I'm not mistaken.
Other side of the... Well, there's a street, there's an internal street that the town has on the master plan that is part of this circle and...
Yeah, that's Fox Club Drive you're talking about.
Fox Club or something.
So the other entrances will be coming in off of this side street and in to the garage from that side.
Okay.
So there's two ways in and out of the garage.
So basically, 399. So I'm just like looking at, I think this MOU will go more in, deeper into the calculations and, but the key impact is you have 50. And if you can create more parking spaces, and that would be key because you got to give that whatever right for the people or the residents, but at the same time, it's, we want to be vibrant because there will be events in the community.
The town manager mentioned that in one of the meetings, that we might want to add additional spaces into the garage for that purpose.
And that's what the leasing agreement is. More than that is like the 75 parking spots that we are, we have already committed for the library. So between all that, you know, how the whole equation would work out. Because this whole phase is going to increase, and with farmers market, I don't know if it is not far enough that the overflows will start flowing through.
That was my call. Great.
Councilmember Schlink?
Tough crowd. I just, I'd like to thank DFI. I was probably the biggest skeptic going into this a few years back, just didn't think in that we were going to get a company that understood the market, and I think you guys do. I think you said that. I think this is, you know, it's what we asked for. We knew we were going to have to bring down bodies to this. I'm one of the biggest naysayers on the council about apartments, but I knew we're going to have to have some down here. I think it's a great footprint. I think as we get through this, I think you'll find we're a little easier to work with. I was the big guy in parking too, and so that's mine. But I think you explain, you understand that, and you've pretty much explained it already somewhat, and at the right time, you'll come to us and say, "This is how it works out." But... But I'll remind the council, all the projects we looked at, everybody was going to have a problem with parking. And I think that this by far had, well, there were other projects that had more apartments and less parking. So, but again, I think you guys get it. I'd like again, thank DFI. You've done a great job, and I think you guys are going to do a great job.
Thank you.
So my quick questions for future would be, just the timeline, once you get it out, I think you guys maybe had talked about 18 months or something, on time on the ground once you start. That would be great or anything, you know, we can do that. In previous discussions, we have a lot of road projects going in. We're going to have something going on in Morrisville Carpenter at the same time next spring. Then we'll probably have something going on at McCrimmins at the other end. So just kind of keep that in mind. Our town staff is here to work with you, obviously, but, and then aviation and airport are both, the interchanges on 40 are getting reworked too. So, and as you guys probably know, and the other projects you've worked on were passed through town. A lot of traffic just wants to get off of 55 to get to 40 or vice versa, get to the airport, get to RTP, get somewhere else, and not necessarily stay in Morrisville. But these people, yes, they're our residents, and I think, I think you're going to find you'll have a market, a nice market for it.
Again, I think, excuse me, I think the thing that we need to continue to focus on is what's going to pull people into this location. And it's, we're going to have to spend a lot of time and effort on branding and positioning in the market and thoughtfulness of what are we trying to achieve and make sure that the general public gets the same vision that we all come out of this process with. So that's what's going to make it successful. Couple, I brought a couple of samples of similar projects in other locations that, for example, this is Burkedale Village in Huntersville outside of Charlotte. It's kind of the same scale where it's not high-rise construction. It's more mid-rise, low-rise with ground-level retail and then multifamily on top or office on top. And then this is Avalon in Alpharetta, Georgia, north of Atlanta. And it's again, street-level retail. The reason I like this image was because it does show the integration of some green spaces. That's very important to have green spaces and assembly spaces for the general public to come and listen to a four-piece band or, you know, somebody reading the Declaration of Independence or whatever it is that the municipality is holding an event, that there needs to be those public spaces, those community spaces that you guys are talking about. And again, it integrates the retail level, sorry, integrates the retail level on the ground with multifamily or in some of these buildings down there, they've got office or, or commercial uses on the second or third floor. So that's, that's kind of some samples of kind of the direction that's in our head where this needs to go.
Okay, I like that one a lot also, Chris, that last one. If you can go back to the one that sort of shows your concept for us. I just want to confirm with Todd that the initial idea of our town green is kind of across the traffic circle from the library? Is that land that we already have site control of, and that's where our concept is?
We don't have all site control in that area, so certainly, I think you've seen concept maps with town green there, and we certainly, some of the discussions we've had in concept, they showed, have shown in that area, but we do not have all the site control in that area at this point.
But just to address that need, that if this is the only project that goes through, that is still something that we could probably make happen in the future, which would be good. I was concerned from this image, it's not clear that you can drive underneath the parking deck to get the Fox Club. So I was very pleased to hear you guys say that, because I know that the library people, they wouldn't want to have to drive into that and then drive back out looking for parking. They can go in and find the parking they need. That over to the right, the retail along Carolina, I think our concept is to have retail continue along Carolina, so it won't be just that 15,000 square feet, the initial concept. So this is just the start of something that will hopefully become a pretty vibrant area, and it really will depend on that first 15,000, how active we are. So the idea of you guys really being intentional about that, I think will help make it a destination. We've heard from Wake County that a community library has 300,000 visitors a year. So that's a big draw to start. It won't be anything on Sundays and limited hours, but I think that'll help this concept come along. It seems like the group is generally comfortable with your moving of the parking deck. Do I get head nods on that? No, not so much. Okay, so most of us are okay with that, so that's something that may be readdressed. But for right now, most of us seem comfortable with that and some do not. Do you want to go on a little bit more about why that's an issue?
Yeah, so, so here's my concern. Putting us fast forward, how, what would you expect to be a completion date for this? For example, 2020, 2021?
This phase? Again, if we break around in spring of 19, you're a year and a half later.
So 2021-ish or so. So, and even with a library, I mean, can you imagine going, wanting to go to the library and you have to go in, and you have to go into a parking deck and try to find parking someplace so that you could run into the library to get a book or something? I mean, that just seems, I mean, I mean, it just seems tough to me in a small town. So that's just one thing I was going to say. And I know there's going to be some surface parking, but more importantly, it gets back to, why would I, if I lived somewhere in the few blocks around this, woo-hoo, great for me, but what is it, what are we doing as a council that, and with this project, with the demonstrations project specifically, kind of in what the mayor Protam said, what is this doing for the town? I mean, we're building a, we're building a residential place with some, you know, retail underneath it. I think incredibly minimal parking comparatively. I think Councilmember Schlink has rubbed off on me now, so thank you for that, Michael down there. And I don't mean to be a naysayer, but it really, it bothers me that there's nothing here, and then, and I get like having to think of the whole concept. And I do think there needs to be a voice on both sides, so that makes us have robust conversation. But if we're looking at it, Phase Two, Phase Three, before, you know, am I going to even be able to enjoy anything downtown before I retire at the pace we're going in? What if we don't do Phase Two? Or what if another developer does Phase Two? What is, what is this going to do for people outside of this narrow geographic area? And this, I see nothing that would make me want to go there. And I guess I wanted to see something that would make me want to go to this place. And if I wasn't living there, I don't know that I'd want to go there for any reason. There's no draw to me.
So what would the draw be? Like 30,000 square feet of retail?
No, I'm thinking like.
Like downtown Cary?
Like downtown Cary, something that would, you know, a gathering place, green space, a community theater, just something that would be, for example, I wish we could do Phase Two first and then do Phase One with all the, you know, with all the income generating stuff. Because right now, what, I guess my question to everybody would be, what would be the reason that any of you would go here on a Friday night?
So I don't have Friday night answer for you, Councilmember Wendell, but I hate to bring this up, but when we were planning for the library, we had the opportunity to build in a municipal room that we could use for events or for special kind of things. And we passed that by with the thought that we could potentially lease out some of the retail space for some municipal functions. Now we have this concept design, we, I, we don't have a room added onto the library, and I don't see a lot of potential for leasing out in this retail environment. It just doesn't, I want more, you know, restaurants and stuff like that, you know, something to bring in people. And where's the municipal add additional functionality? I just don't see it.
Just, it feels like you have a county library that is a little bit misplaced within a residential apartment complex, to me. I don't know, I wish, I wish I knew.
Been to Cameron Park? You've ever been out to Cameron Village in Raleigh? I mean, it's been there 30 years. It's the same setup.
I have, yeah, but this is Morrisville, it's not Cameron Village, but I appreciate that, and I have been there. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rouse?
I mean, in my, I think, addressing what Councilmember Wendell says, I mean, I think, when I think of successful downtowns, I just think of the experience people get. I grew up in Charleston, West Virginia, and when I was a kid, I just have a memory of my mom taking us to the bakery, going to get great hot dogs, going to a special department store to get our clothes, and then ending the day at the library watching a movie. And the irony is that what killed the downtown was the town center. So they built a big mall called the Charleston Town Center, and that eliminated, now the town center's going out of business and the downtown's reemerging. So I think that's what we're aiming for, is, I guess the concern is legitimate, is, you know, is there enough of a plate, is there enough of a shell being built with this investment that we could aim towards that, so that we get, you know, I think it's not going to happen overnight, but I think we need to have some things there, whether it's a bakery, whether it's a brewery, whether it's some unique food. It looks like people are looking more now, instead of chain restaurants, looking for that experience, you know, like the JMR restaurants that are around Wake County, like Medlin, there's one on Medlin Road. Very boutique, homegrown kind of cooking and sort of historic-type buildings. That's what I think would draw people in. People are looking for good food and a good experience. So that's just my comment on that. The follow-up to that, and I was just curious as to, I know Mayor Protam Skrogan Johnson's on the Wake County Affordable Housing Committee, but I was at their budget presentation last week, and their new budget, their budget's being proposed as recommending $15 million to allow for 2,500 more units of affordable housing. Would that be something that we would want to consider, you know, as a council in terms of a portion of this being affordable housing, which would actually help recruit a different type of demographic, maybe younger, that would differentiate us from, you know, some of the other neighboring municipalities, so.
Yeah, the affordable housing discussion is something we hear about in a lot of communities as we're, as we're out, you know, up and down the East Coast, working on these projects. And so it's a, it's a lot bigger discussion related to what, what you define as affordable or workforce and, and, you know, it's a very complex model to get into in, you know, a few minutes here. But again, we've had initial comments brought to us during our work sessions regarding that, and, you know, we're aware of the interest of potentially doing something like that. We just, you know, need to continue to work through the entire model and the entire concept and be prepared to bring back something with answers of why we've done what we've done.
Okay, and I really like how you talked about the branding and how you have to be intentional about how you're going to help us make this a destination area. So hopefully there's, you can bring some of your expertise to help us to feel comfortable with that as we move along in the process. One thing I noticed in your slides is it looked like you just had one set of residential, one floor of residential above the retail. It looks like there's two.
Two or three.
So, so three, three above, even above the retail, okay. And if you can also, in future presentations, just bring forth the idea of the walkability and how this will be a positive walkable place, whether or not you can go from like parking garage and out the front door to that courtyard, the north courtyard, for example. I think that will give us some comfort level. Is that a pool in the south courtyard?
Correct, that's the amenity courtyard for the residents, correct.
Okay, for the residents. This looks like it comes together nicely for me. I am comfortable, and it sounds like most of us are comfortable, the moving of the parking. Insofar as Councilmember Wendell, I think he's a little bit less comfortable with it, the fact that, we haven't addressed all the, yeah, the number of parking spaces has been something that we've discussed even with DFI from the start. That's been something that we've been working with, and you guys are the experts, but we need to be comfortable. So there's the balance there that you guys will have to find. Does any other council members have any comments that they'd like to share at this time? When will we hear from you guys again? Or are you moving forward to say some? No?
Yeah.
Okay, Council, Vicky Skrogan Johnson?
I, I would like to echo Councilmember Rouse's comments about affordable housing. So part of the solution to having what we consider not enough parking could be more affordable units, and then the town would have more consideration for transit options. So it's not in isolation, no projects in isolation, but the town would have to be a little more diligent about establishing bus routes and, you know, getting that kind of information forward.
From a schedule standpoint, we likely would need, I haven't requested this to the mayor yet, but a work session on the MOU in June, if that works out. We would certainly like to brief the MOU in June, I mean, in July. And if, once that's executed, we certainly would start working on the development agreement, and we would like to execute that by the end of the calendar year.
And Chris, did your team note that transit, we'd like to make sure that there's possible opportunities for stop, bus stops and stuff within. That's something that's been brought up. Wake County Transit Plan will be bringing that kind of stuff forward. Councilmember Garamella.
And I think, I remember one of the prime discussion item was, the library would be the crown jewel of this entire demonstration project, and I'm hoping that would, is still the focus area, right? There was some discussion that the heights and how it is, it would be kept in such a way that it will still stand out. So that's one thing of your design, because that was the whole idea of the demonstration project, to keep the library as the crown jewel there.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for taking time out of your schedule and coming from all directions to meet with us tonight. We really appreciate your efforts and your ongoing efforts. We look forward to hearing what you bring forward in June. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to item 2B, which is Budget and CIP Work Session. Jean Hooks will be leading it. I would like to ask a couple of questions of my fellow council members first. First off, as a council, how long would we like to discuss this item tonight? We finished that one a little bit early. Right now it's 7:18. Do we want to give this maybe a little over an hour and a half or two hours? Do people have initial thoughts? Vicky Skrogan Johnson?
I think we should give it 60 minutes and do a temperature check. I'd like to start out looking at CIP and flip around to budget after that, because we've been all doing our homework and prioritization on CIP, and I know Jeannie is just excited to share that with all of us, yes.
Okay, is everyone good with one hour as a temperature check? My next question was going to be, how do we want to attack this? Budget first or CIP first? Are we okay with the suggestion of starting with CIP? Okay, seems like we have a direction. Jeannie Hooks, please take us through what you'd like to share tonight.
Okay, great. Welcome, everybody. Glad to see everybody's faces tonight, and I hope you're excited, as excited as I am at talking about CIP and budget. So I think the first thing I'll start with is really just handing out some information of, for those that participated, I'll give you a summary glance, okay? Okay, can you hear me? Okay, can everybody hear me?
Quick question about your summary. I actually put in years on some of my items as well, and I see that you've got high, medium, low.
Let me pull it up for you guys so you can see, because I balanced it. Well, you will notice on the back that I attached everybody's individual ones, so that you could see that, because not everybody approached this in the same way. So that's why you see some with just the highs, mediums, and lows, and. high mediums and lows and, actually he doesn't need all that.
And some just staggered.
And some just staggered with, with the years because not everybody chose the high, medium, and low. So let me pull this up on the screen so you can see. Who's right? With budget, there's never one solution. There's multifaceted solutions. It's just the what works for you collectively as a council. There's the politically correct answer. All right. So let's see if we can get this up here. Is that okay? Okay. So, so what, you ask yourself, what could you really glean from this, from the participation? I think you can really grasp what projects are, you, you collectively have some interest in. I think would be the first at a glance. Whether it's a high, medium, or low or a year assignment, I think generally you can look at it. If there's more than two people, you could say, hey, there's, there's some interest there. That could be a place to start the conversation.
And could you help us with that? Cause this is just a lot of data being thrown right at us. What's your initial take on what you see?
So when I look at it, I look across, let's see, one, two, three, four, technically five people have provided some level of interest. If you look at the top, there's at least three folks that are interested in Cedar Fork Elementary, for example. For the next line, there's at least four people that have selected in some fashion Cedar Fork District Park as a level of interest. That's four council members generally interested in some level or degree in that particular type of project.
But not this next fiscal year because in mine, I had also delayed it to 2021. And I also see that a couple of the council members have delayed it. So it's important, but we're balancing other priorities to start in 2019 and 2020, so.
One that I, that I wanted, so, you know, I think that the, there's core projects, I think that we, that's what I would like to take away from this is what, Councilmember Garamella, uh, the last time we were together made a comment that really resonated with me. And that was, what are the few projects that we all can agree on that we can get done in the next two years? Because I think once we do that, we're going to feel a sense, I mean, so that's what I was hoping, that we could at least see a pattern of specific things that we can come together on. And that's what I got out of this exercise, although I might have put columns in the wrong place.
I think you have iterative steps. You could, you could approach it in that way. First, you just take at a glance, really in general terms, what are those common projects that you all kind of see as important or the majority of you may see and put that on the table. And then you could potentially discuss those projects, why they're important. And then, uh, something that staff can help you with is really in terms of, uh, influences, um, opportunities, is help you plan those out across a period, a period of time. That's what we can help you with by understanding the, the intricacies of these projects, the timing, um, other influences that are at play here. So it's just a suggestion and a thought.
Okay. Is it possible you can maybe highlight the ones that have four?
Sure.
Just get us started?
Four?
Yeah, four out of seven, uh, or four out of five, really, from what we've got.
Well, I think that could be your next conversation was my suggestion. First, start with really what, at a very high level, which ones did you generally have interest in? And then pull those to the table, filter those to the top is another way of saying that. And then talk about timing and planning and what, what is something is more important than another in that filtered list. Again, a suggestion of trying to get your conversation started.
Yeah, that's what I thought I was asking, to sort of identify what those ones were, that we can sort of get some consensus on. Their general importance, less so on the timing.
I have already circled them. Do you want me to go through those? Just to let you know, my approach was to prioritize the road connectivity with McCrimmon. So a lot of mine are higher in nature as it relates to road connections. But there are some common ones that I've seen in the patterns. And, um, we have the Cedar Fork District Park Field Improvements, which was rated high, but there's a delay start. So instead of the fiscal year 2019, which we're considering today, um, 2021 was when it was fit in due to other competing priorities. I see a food hub phase two as being pretty high. Um, also, um, one individual wants to start it this year and another one wants to delay a year. And then we have highs all across. So that food hub is...
But you didn't get all the inputs though, right? That's what I'm trying to say.
Everyone had the same opportunity.
It's a place to start.
Right. Exactly. Exactly. Um, the other is this, um, Morrisville Community Park Phase Three that was part of our original bond scope. We are working on the community center, but we also have this as a, a priority because it was part of that original scope. And interestingly, we have the Public Works Facility, which is a 6.8 million, very much needed project. Some individuals, um, want to delay the start to 2020 or 2021 depending. And that's obviously a conversation about cash flow and, you know, do you want to do smaller projects now and then do the larger products a little later? That's for consideration. And then another one that really popped for me was the Town Center Parking Lot. It's a, a delay of a year to align with the timeline for the Town Center, but there was a lot of highs indicated there that I could see.
And one that didn't mention that Jeannie did identify as the Crabtree Crossing Greenway Connector has four, even though a couple of those are low, they were, um, at least something there. I guess maybe lows.
Are we already doing that? Aren't we already doing that?
So, so there's a section that you funded that's actually from the existing greenway to Morrisville Carpenter Road. So that is the section that has been funded. The one that this one is referring to is the one on the other side of the creek that goes down Crabtree Crossing to Morrisville Parkway. So it is the, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, it's the west side of the road. Am I correct? West side of Crabtree Crossing for the, um, Greenway.
Yeah. Where their apartments are, are there sidewalk gaps there or is it just a thin sidewalk at this time?
It's just a sidewalk on Crabtree Crossing Parkway at this time, on both.
It's already been done. I think we don't need this one in there. It's done.
Well, if you look at the information on the particular project, that is something that the CIP team kind of noted, that you actually have some access, uh, accessibility and connection as, as a sidewalk on the other side of the road currently. Um, I think the transportation plan requires it on both sides of the road. Am I correct?
Yes.
A sidewalk on both sides of the road.
Yeah, but I, I don't know. I'm not following, both sides of the road, there's no road there.
And you can see staff, actually, the CIP team actually rated it as low for those very reasons. There's other higher priorities.
No road.
Right. There's not a road, but there is that connection with the Greenway. On that side.
So those are some items there highlighted. Um, do we as a council feel like these are important issues that we'd like to sort of discuss a little bit further? Or are we all comfortable that these are some of the top priorities that we feel we should go forward with? Uh, Councilmember Garamella.
Two things I added, if you scroll down.
Yes.
Was specifically the food hub thing. Um, the concept of food hub 250, if you're going with that, um, basically talks about the parking lot and the electric connection. Um, one of the items that was, you know, Vicky and I had brought up was the stage on part of the round table because I don't like the name food hub phase two. I want it to be, um, used throughout the week in some fame, uh, some shape or form. It's not a dedicated Saturday morning event thing. And that was the whole thing that they could, uh, perfect example is music in the park that they're doing. And Mr. Pellegrini, when he came there and said, when you're starting the phase two, we will start, you know, fundraising in whatever shape or form. So he can start that. We can do with that. That would somehow, that's the reason I wanted the stage where, you know, some money allocated to that, where it would be a, uh, it could be programmed in throughout the week in some shape or form where it's very limited space. But that was the whole concept of doing that because the place, everyone is getting it, you know, excited about it. All we need is, if you're doing it, add something to it. That was the whole concept. And I do recollect him coming and asking about it.
If Councilmember Garamella could give his second thing, and then if I could maybe connect your work to what's proposed in the CIP that we've included in your budget, that I think will answer some of these questions.
Clarification, I'm sorry, but we're not making decisions on this work session about this stuff, right?
That's not the intention, just to sort of get an idea of consensus of the direction of the CIP, which can possibly affect our budget.
I don't think we can do that. Um, but because I would say that just in general, we heard, we talked about a town green. And I'm, I'm with you guys. I, I always thought, and this was brought up during the, uh, farmer's market, that it competes with the town green. So, and we learned tonight, we don't even have control of that property. So I would just caution the council that the town green, I think is, is, could do a lot of things that we're talking about for the, this area. And I think they're kind of different. And then I know at the retreat, we talked about other things that I think we need to bounce off of. And I will, uh, if you look at what I proposed, I think those were, I don't want to go into discussion about mine tonight, but I think we do need at some point discuss that, uh, but not tonight.
Okay. That sounds reasonable.
And other thing I brought it up was, uh, uh, the Davis and McCrimmon Pedestral Signal was because as part of the spot study, um, Benjamin, uh, was able to get from DOT, um, the traffic light and also the part of the signalization, like, you know, the design, right? The, um, like get the design done. So if we could get the pedestrian signal crossing, which is the main, uh, artery for connecting the Greenway from this side of the Davis to the other side, when RTP is pretty much getting complete now, and they can take the Greenway connection from the pedestal and go to the other side. Uh, that would be very helpful because the amount of crash, uh, report, you pull it anywhere you find it, the amount of accidents happening in that intersection is very dangerous. That would be a very safe place to put one pedestrian crossing.
The, um, so just to, for point of clarification from what Councilman Garamella said, um, one of the concerns I had about the, the food hub from the very beginning was a place that folks would want to come and gather. And right now, you know, I'm, I'm so glad we're looking at electricity so we can have it for more than one day. I think, I think having a, you know, a stage, you know, I was thinking like the clamshell stage. And then I was thinking even in terms of like a large gazebo, if someone wanted to go down and get married on a weekend or if a band wanted to come in and play or whatever it may be. But it would, it would definitely, and what I'd like, what I would ask is if we could, under consideration, the, the town staff do some research or whatever it may be on what it would take to be able to build something in that area that can be used in the short term. Um, the, you know, if we, if we waited, you know, for the, the, the town green, I think from design, we can be purposeful in designing it different than what this particular food hub might look like. And the only other thing I'd just like us to consider is in the heat of the day, there is zero shade anywhere in that area. And I understand there are some, um, uh, portable units to, for the restroom, but I don't know about, you know, if, if you were out there on a weekend and listening to a band play and, you know, getting some food at the farmer's market and just wanting to have a picnic on that green space, to not have any kind of covered area at all, I mean, it's just, it would be scorchingly hot out there, I'm afraid. And I don't know if there is something that we consider with regard to the, you know, either, um, a shelter similar to at, uh, Church Street Park or even the triangular sail-shaped shades that could be put around that would look kind of cool and, and, and still provide some kind of, um, relief for the, for the sun. So I just think if I'm, if people were going to use it with their kids, unless you bring your umbrella, it might get very, very hot very, very quickly. So just something to consider.
Yeah, those kind of things I've seen on, uh, elementary school playgrounds, for example, might be good. There's just a real challenge of space. There is what I've heard from staff in general, but it sounds like there's definitely an appetite to try to enhance, uh, the food hub a little bit more than is initially shown here. Um, so maybe, uh, council might be sort of asking to sort of see if we can get some enhancements to the electricity and the paving, um, you're realizing that the space is really a concern there. Um, so.
If we get it, then that's my thing is, right, and get it to use it more than Saturday. That's, that's my whole thing.
Yeah, I think that's what we all like. But, um, to Councilmember Schling's point, if the town green is going to meet a lot of these needs, we don't want to do a lot of investing to sort of reinvent the wheel a little bit better in a few years. So that's sort of more of a, a policy that would sort of be, probably discussion, good to have now. Is this something that, it's just sort of a, a real temporary? Or if we're looking for some kind of clamshell, that's kind of more permanent? Um, I'd love to hear from a few more of the council members on their thoughts on that.
Well, it seems like the town green is not possible at this time without land control.
I think it's fair to, um, be aspirational that we're going to get all the land control that we need to do all the phases, to do anything else. Um, I think sort of hinders the process.
It's reality.
I thought Indian Head Trail, we were starting to programs there. I'd, I'd be willing to put something bigger at Indian Head Trail. I mean, that's already got a bathroom facility, it's got parking. I don't know why we don't think about doing a stage there. I think we've already putting in, uh, music there already, starting now. So why not?
Okay. Um, let me talk about the food hub first and maybe give some options and suggestions that council might want to consider. So just a, a brief part of history, the project, um, when the original concept, uh, included everything that you're talking about, it was cost prohibitive for consideration by the council. Things were taken out of that project to make it a workable space for the farmer's market, the educational garden with a small green area. I want to make clear, staff has already been charged with programming that space beyond Saturday and have been working to develop a plan to do that from the day this opened. So that is already part of our operational plan to recognize that we want that green space, small and limited as it might be, to be programmed with more things, music. I think the Indian Creek music is a test run for putting music in the area. So, so some of those things were working. We talked about a stage. We talked about a stage from a standpoint of taking it out of the project, knowing that we could provide it through rentals when we needed it and until we could afford more. So, so some of those operational decisions have been, uh, considered as we were trying to get to a viable food market or food hub project. We also talked about bathrooms. Currently, they use, restrooms would be very nice. Uh, but, but there are some portageons that are on the property for vendors and customers. They're, they're sort of hidden away as they're working in the temporary parking lot. Uh, we also recognized that was a significant cost component of the project. And we did sort of recognize Indian Creek Trailhead could be used as a substitute for those bathrooms as we considered those types of things. The project got phased and as you've mentioned, phase two really became asphalt and electricity, both are which are in your proposed budget. both are which are in your proposed budget as a recommended capital improvement project. The phase two is for the asphalt and the electricity. Both of those things need to happen. Both of those things are easier to accomplish now, rather than incorporate additional components to a phase two. You can direct staff to look at those and still authorize the phase two in the budget. It is not as simple as a clamshell or a small stage. There's all kinds of requirements that we would have to check, spacing, bathrooms, but we can consider all of those. At your direction, we can also consider other options to, if you want to consider a broader footprint to put some of those things, or an expanded town green, as you really just heard from Armada Hoffler, we can evaluate those and bring you back that information if you still want to proceed with the rest of the originally planned improvements for the food hub, which is in the budget proposal.
I would just say that, in looking at, if we were going to go down the road with Armada Hoffler, we're talking about years down the road. And I want to be able, I would love to be able for this council to deliver a tactile something in the near term, rather than it always being a year away, and a year away, and a year away, and it just, everything starts getting down the road. And we have, I think we have a lot of unique opportunities to do some really good things. This is a project that the entire town would want to come and be a part of, and I think that, that's something that we should, you know, we can be excited about. I don't know what the walking distance is from the Indian Creek bathrooms to the food hub, but if I were a vendor selling watermelon, and I was there by myself, and I had to use the restroom, I don't know that I would want to walk all the way to Indian Head to use the restroom and then come back. So I think we need to, we need to think in terms of putting ourselves in the shoes of the people that are going to use it every day, and what would we want if we, if, you know, we were the vendors, or if we were the residents using it, what would we want? And if it requires a little bit more capital spending, you know, then we do it and we deliver.
Thank you, Councilmember Wendell. So let me add a little bit of clarification. I'm not advocating another gear down the road. I'm saying, I can't provide you some of the answers that you might need to consider about what would be involved, what is possible, or how much additional time it would take to consider those things until staff would be able to explore what those options are. We could, you could charge us with bringing you back that information very quickly. If the $250,000 is put into the budget, then it's appropriated for the phase two, and you can still proceed with that and considering other options. It, it's just a suggestion. We would need to come back to you with what that additional incremental cost is, which we won't know till it's designed, reviewed, approved, and we get an additional construction estimate.
And you get, you have control throughout the process. So what Martha's saying is, that, I hear that you are valuing the food hub and some expansion of the service. The how and what, you still control that, but you're giving us direction that this is important, and something we need to begin to plan for and put into either this first year capital budget, which is what the town manager has recommended. But it, all along, you get to guide that process of what that's going to look like, just as you are dealing with the town center, the demonstration project. You approve the concept, but all along, you're getting checkpoints where you are still guiding and directing the process of what is going to truly be there.
Great. If we're talking about bathrooms, though, I'd rather invest money into fixing Luther Green's bathrooms in the Mooresville Community Park. And we had kind of had those discussions, and we put those off, which is fine, but I'm just, for me, those are higher priority. And then I would move on and just say that I'm for the public works facility. But I was waiting on more, when we get more information about how it can fit in with Cedar Fork District Park upgrades, and that second connection that I think would be coming as part of with Wake County about moving the recycling center or enlarging it. But that's when I think the leveraging that I've talked about for years could happen there, and we could use, with road improvements going on along there, and everything, and the second entrance and the light being put in, I think that's the time when the public, that's why I want to be shovel-ready for public works.
If I could just sort of, let's circle back and finish with the food hub first before touching on another item. So it sounds like, do we have consensus that we would like staff to keep moving forward with the two items for the 250, and then also bring us back some more information about enhancing? I'd also like to have us keep in mind that the Indian Creek Trailhead, their green space is just about the same size as the food hub green space. It's like a one-tenth of a mile walking loop around it. Is it about the same size?
I don't know that answer. The, the challenge with Indian Creek is it's used for other things. It's not the intended purpose is to put it, I mean, you've got a playground there, you've got the connection to the walking trail, you've got picnic shelters, it is already rented out. Don't take away a rental opportunity for something else, is just what I would offer.
Yeah, I wasn't proposing farmer's market there or anything, just in general, that's a place that we've seen that the music can work, and it sort of already has some shelter space. So it's not like we're not meeting the need by having the food hub not have something at this time.
No, no, I'm just, it's, it's more of, it would be like having a farmer's market out in the middle of a football field. That's what I'm talking about. When I talk about shelters, I'm not talking about picnic shelters. I'm talking about a shelter that, if it started pouring down rain and you were in the middle of the, you know, the farmer's market, to be able to get out, I mean, it's just a wide open space right now. And it would be nice, if we're going to do it, to make it world-class, make it a, make it a true destination of what, where someone would want to come on a weekend and, you know, go shop for veggies, you know?
Yeah, and what I liked about one of the last slides from Armada Hoffler, they had the Avalon, Georgia, and how it was just someone standing on a box, playing music, and it was a nice little scene there. So we can make whatever we need to with that. I mean, I've seen Indian Creek Trailhead area with a really nice stage where people were performing a few years ago for East Meets West. So there, we have some good assets there, and I think the food hub will be another really good one.
Staff would not, July 1st, start the work without seeing how it integrates better. I mean, we would be the, one of the first to tell you, the more you put together, and we would bring that back to you rather than doing phase two and then coming back to you. We would, anything that's overhead, I mean, we, we just have to check those UDO things, and, and we would do that. We, we would plan accordingly. But if you appropriate the money, then we know which direction we're heading in.
We have consensus that we are generally in favor with the appropriation as shown for that one. Kind of have head nods on that one? Okay, great.
Yes.
I think Councilmember Schlink wanted to start to talk, discuss the public works facility?
I was going to talk about that one next.
Okay, so, why don't we move on to that one?
The mayor.
Okay.
About the, we had, had not about item 32, the Davis Drive, Macraman.
I'll come back to that one.
Okay.
Is that what you were looking for?
All right, if you look at page 77, this is, is the proposed capital investment plan. This is in your book, this is in your budget book. And, and a proposed CIP scenario for your consideration. So one of the things that we've already talked about is the funding, the $250,000 for the food hub. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna discontinue talking about that one. The other one that's been mentioned already is the public works facility. And as you are aware, staff, really led by Todd, and so I might call on him multiple times during this conversation, has been leading the team of both town staff and the Wake County multiple partners about our need to, to do something with our public works facility, and their need and desire to expand their convenience center. We also have our Cedar Fork Park nearby, where we've had previously identified some constraints related to access to that park and roadway network connectivity that connects to some of those backfields, and our ability to even further improve that area with things like lights, et cetera, to enhance programming at that place. So all of those things came together, and the staff has been meeting regularly to evaluate the options, individually and collectively. So we're looking at our interests, Wake County's looking at their interest, and then we're looking at how those can marry up together. We've gotten far enough along that we think that we should be looking at ways to proceed on both of those projects together. So Wake County is requesting some money to continue with site design, and that is what our request is. We'll be the first to acknowledge for you, it's a big old guess on how much we need for site design and prep. We're working off a, an older, original construction cost estimate, so we've done our best to reasonably estimate what that money is. We're also suggesting that you put it into a capital project, so whether we use all of that money or not for site design, you would be preserving it for any future construction cost, if that would, would be what would occur. Of course, if we needed more, we would be coming back to you. We, we've also talked about the need to go ahead and invest in that site design and prep work, and all of the environmental things that affect a construction design, so that we can get you a realistic cost estimate. The critical, there's two critical things with this project. One is that collaboration with Wake County, if we're going together hand in hand. And the second is the aviation Parkway road project that will come in. That factor alone, if we are ahead of that road project, will save us $700,000 is our estimate, because of those road improvements. So, so that, there is a significant timing factor of getting the public works project done in advance of the aviation Parkway improvements that are already being designed. Another very important part is the enhanced safety for, especially for our staff, in, in aligning entrances and exits, and then even collaborating effectively with a community partner for better access for those using the Wake County. And out of that, we also think we'll get some of those road connections back into Cedar Fork District Park. So it's a great example of a regional collaboration project where everybody really wins. I don't think any of us have doubted that we need to do something with our public works facility, and it's sort of why it goes first. What you see in my CIP model is recognizing that the initial investment for the site design is a cash outlay of ours. We need that construction estimate before we could really get the debt proceeds to pay for it. And so I've, I've, just in rough calculations, remembering the CIP is one budget year, which you address every year, that's your real cash commitment, and then four future planning years. You've seen through your Budgetopia why you need to plan for those future years with some of those debt service and all the other things that you're considering that you might want to do. So I've taken that 6.8 number. I've mentioned in our CIP, we've tried to cover that with significant amounts of contingency, because it is a plan, and we want to provide you some safeguards at not coming up short or overly short. So I've, I've deducted that from this, the 1.3 from the 6.8 to recognize that we probably need to finance about five and a half million dollars, and then what that debt service payment would do. And I front-loaded that, especially as Mayor Protam Scroggins-Johnson has mentioned. We've known for many years, we had a high-dollar year coming. It was 2019, because we did not issue our bond debt this year. It's going to be 2020, and we just have to recognize that as you make other debt service decisions. So that was why I've made that recommendation, because I'm also trying to protect that debt ratio. And again, this is a status quo kind of CIP proposal. This is what we can afford within our existing resources, and recognizing we forecast growth and all of those things in the future. The other recommended project for the CIP for this year is the Green Fairview Stormwater Project. Most of that is covered out of the stormwater fund, so it's not affecting our general fund balance. It is a, a safety issue for the residents that live back there. It's also a road deterioration project for us. When the road floods, not only can residents, more, more importantly, public safety vehicles get back there, and it is deteriorating the road faster. So that is why that project was recommended for this year. So all of the recommendations this year are cash outlays, using our fund balance, recognizing that then we've got debt coming on, and we, we know we'll be adding the additional debt for both the parks and recreation bonds, and the remaining streets improvement bonds as well. So as I try to illustrate future projects, the, the debt service and the initial outlay of site design where necessary are in those out years. So that's what you see, and I am happy to answer any questions. The other thing that you'll notice online, and we've had some conversation about this, is, is I've taken the liberty of really identifying that you've got some viable bond referendum-type projects, that, that you could put to the voters for support through increased tax dollars to enhance our debt capacity. And it's not just about debt capacity, it's not just about tax increment, but getting prepared for that is, is something that we can do, and having it outlined in our CIP plan, what our priorities are, help with our bond referendum discussions.
So to bring it back to the public works facility, do we have, it seems like we have pretty good support of going forward with the town manager's plan to sort of get some design funding first, and look forward to next year, a larger ticket for the construction?
Questions? Trying to understand it, okay. So just, so you want to spend 1.3 million dollars, and is that going to get you a, it's going to design the road intersections at that, what's it actually going to get?
It's going to design the public works facility.
Okay, so a few years back, a town council authorized a combined fire and police station together, and I think they spent $600,000, and it never happened, so that money kind of went away. Is that what could happen here, then? Because the next year, you're going to ask, we're going to come up with five and a half million dollars if we don't go ahead and build it? Is that right?
No, sir. The original concept, and I think that was back in 2004, included a much bigger concept on that parcel, which, as you indicated, included public works training facilities. That price tag was at least 12 million dollars, maybe 15 million dollars, and it was taken out for the last time this project was reviewed, that we got to that 6.8. So that is not included in this project at all, at all.
No, I understand what I'm trying to figure out, though, is, I just don't want to design something and then not do it, because the next year, spending five and a half million dollars, does that trigger a tax increase?
Not in my proposed model.
Right, but if a recession would hit or something, it might. And then I'm just, my question then is, I understand, but we're spending money on designing something like the Aquatic Center, for instance. If we decide not to do the Aquatic Center, then we're kind of, that money's down the drain somewhat. If we're deciding not to do it at that location, but my kind, that might be a little different, because then I'm thinking you could pick up the design and move it somewhere else. But in this case, I don't think you could do that with the public works facility.
When we talked about MAFC, and I would reiterate the same thing here, you have to be committed to the project. And so it is designed for this site, this location, you can't pick up the design and move it, it's related to environmental conditions and site conditions. You have to be committed to funding the project if you're going to design and recognize the need for it. If, if you do not do something about the public works facility, we will not be able to service our vehicles and, and offer other critical services to this community.
No, what I'm saying, though, is you could delay, you could do a lot of the road improvements surrounding it, leave the land vacant, but still then, down the road, design what we want, based upon other needs. I would be in favor of a bond referendum, for instance, for the public works facility. I've said that before. And I think you're just, this, what this does is you're pushing, we're agreeing then to two-year plan. We're agreeing, in essence, to spend almost $7 million. And I, and again, I just caution everybody, I have concerns about cost overruns, that all of a sudden, if we agree to this, then, in this year's budget, then all of a sudden, we start running to cost overruns from a Crimmins Extension to the Aquatic Center to Mooresville Carpenter of millions of dollars combined, then all of a sudden, we're looking at having to do a tax increase or not doing something. And again, what I'm talking about is about 10 years ago, a different town council and a different staff had a combined fire and police station instead of the, and they spent $600,000, but it didn't happen because it was going to cost $7 million to build it. But the town council at the very end decided that they weren't going to have a tax increase, so they didn't do it, ended up being the current fire station that we're in. And that's all I caution, I don't want to get into that again by saying, well, if we agree to the 1.3 this year, then we're going to have to do 5.5 the following year. And I just would, and again, I'll just end by saying that I, there are too many unknown variables with cost overruns and execution that I'm still concerned about.
It's good to be concerned, that's why we're here, to have this discussion and to put these concerns on the table so that we can all address them and know them and make an informed decision. I think back to Kannapolis and how the risk they took, and they, they're moving forward, and there hasn't thankfully been a recession, so they're moving forward their projects. I think it's important to go forward, planning for the future, and if something does happen that's catastrophic, like a recession, we will adjust as necessary, but that shouldn't hinder us from moving forward with our aspirations. And I think Councilmember Johnson maybe wanted to share, it looked like you had your finger there. Councilmember Wendell, I think, would want to say something?
No, I absolutely agree. I mean, having spent, you know, half a day over at the Public Works Center and walking the grounds with the folks, I think it's looking strategically of where we want to go and to be able to service this town in the future. It just, it's, I think it's imperative that we do something now. The only question I would have, and forgive my naivete, is the $1.3 million for planning. I'd just be curious, like, where does that money go to? Is it an architect or whoever? And don't need to do it now, but it just seems like a lot of money to plan a space, in my mind, I'd love to be that consultant. But, but at the end of the day, you know, I think we need to do it. I think it is one of those things that we say, hey, yes, we need this new public works facility to be able to provide the services to our community that we need. You know, I hate to say it, but they're kind of working out of shacks and semi, so the folks that work there actually built their offices within the facility so that they would have a place to work. And I think it's incumbent upon us as the leaders of this town to be able to have a, you know, a facility that is due 2018 or 2019. And then once we commit to it, we need to commit to it. And, you know, frankly, if that means we have to do a tax increase, then so be it, we do a tax increase. But we can't let the fear of that stop us from doing it because we will, it'll always, again, I fall back to my, it'll always be next year, and then what happens if we don't do it, we should do it next year. So I would be very much in favor of approving this and being, getting all into it, so.
Member Johnson, then Councilmember Ral, please.
So I will just echo what Jerry and TJ said, and you make up, you bring up a really good point, Michael. It's not a question for Martha to answer, it's a question for this council to answer as to how committed you are to the project or not, and do you have the political will to move forward or not? So I think that's for us to answer amongst ourselves, and I am, I am, I've always said I'm behind a new public works facility. I think it's necessary, it's needed, and not only is it needed for our employees, but it'll make them more effective and efficient in their, in their job. I do agree with you, though, I do think it's worthy of a bond referendum question. I think it would get public support. I'm okay with putting the design money in this year, and just so you know, the way I addressed this, I love the exercise you gave us, Jeannie. It really was a lot of fun to be able to go in there and play with it myself and to see what we could do. But I will tell you, in the end, you know, I decided for me, it was necessary to look at this year about what we could fund, because I'm hopeful that these other projects, the public will help us answer, whether they be, you know, the Crepe Tree Crossing Nature Park or the Cedar Fork Ballparks. I want the public to weigh in on what they want to see, and then we can hopefully have this as a bond question next year. I mean, we talked about doing a bond referendum in 2019, so I'm willing to put that out there for the public, though, if they want to, if they want to put the 5.5 million to build the facility as a bond referendum.
I do.
You and I agree, then.
And, and I think there's lots of things that need to be talked about related to a bond referendum, many, many factors, including, you know, how much you ask for and then parsing down what projects. I have a different perspective on asking the voters for a public works facility that I'd like to share at the appropriate time, but again, it is council's decision.
And that's a question that is to come, a question that's to come and to be answered. It's not something we need to answer right now. I would agree with that, and it needs a full discussion.
Well, it has to happen before the budget, if you plan on including this as part of the budget, is my point.
Well, I just said I'm okay with including the design work, the 1.3, the design work, and then we can have that discussion about how we fund the 5.5 million to actually build it.
And that's fine, but then again, then you're, as we discussed here, for the 5.5 afterwards. And I think that's disingenuous and not transparent to the voters, but we've been through this before.
I'm not being disingenuous, and I've said repeatedly over the years that I am in favor of a public works facility and funding it. I am absolutely in favor of that.
I disagree, I'm just saying it's priorities and budget, so you're, you're saying you're all in, so you're willing to raise taxes if necessary to do this, and I'm saying, oh, well, let the, let's let the voters, as we just discussed about a bond referendum, decide that.
I'm sorry, so to be clear, Martha said there's a way to do that without increasing taxes, and her, in her proposed plan, there is a way to do that without increasing taxes.
I agree. That's why I brought up, 10 years ago, you were on the council when you guys decided not to do that and didn't do the combined fire and police station. That's all, I'm just bringing it up.
Well, let's, let's let the other council members, and Councilmember Ral, then Mayor Protam, please.
I've spent a lot of time at the public works facility the last few years, every time there's bad weather, going out there and driving around with our staff. And I, I agree with, well, I think Councilmember Wendell took the words right out of what I was going to say, but I, it's something that I've committed to, that I think we've got to, we've got to make it happen as soon as we can, and that means approving the design. I'm willing to make the investment, whether that's done through a bond or not. Bonds are good, but the problem is sometimes bonds take a long time, it's a lot of work to get the approval, to put it on, to go through the financing. We floated some bonds in 2012, we haven't even broken ground on the Aquatic Center, it's 2018. So that's, I'm good on, and then the other one, I don't know if we're going to talk about, out there is Mooresville Community Park. And so, you know, I think that we've got to, I'd like the council to consider, and we don't have to talk about it tonight, but for this budget, or just in the next year, I really want us to look and hear from our Director of Parks and Rec on what it's going to take to get the investment to make Mooresville Community Park Phase Two happen, because we, there, we didn't, we didn't promise it to the voters in 2012, but there was an expectation out there. Well, technically we didn't, it's just a Parks Bond, but we, there was an expectation out there.
Can we hold that one, we'll maybe do that one next?
Okay, that's fine, and we don't have to get it, but I didn't want to get to the night without bringing that up.
Mayor Protam, Scroggins-Johnson, and then Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple thoughts. We are long overdue to improve our infrastructure, which includes the public works facility, and our staff and our residents and our businesses deserve to have that investment by the town. So a couple things that we have to recall, as our town manager said, is this is a window of opportunity where we can actually have cost savings. $1.3 million investment in design will help us be more shovel-ready, and it will also align us with the Wake County planning that is ongoing right now to expand their facility, and also the NC DOT is looking at road widening. All three of these parties, ourselves included, we can complement each other and potentially save money and not spend twice. So I see this year as being the year to invest in a design, and we can do that without raising taxes. We will have more information about potential costs and options to finance after we have the design information. That could be a bond, that, it could be another mechanism. There are many different ways to finance a project of this magnitude, but it is the time to do it now, and there are other parties that will be looking to us to lead.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
All right, Martha. I, I went a couple of times every time during the snow time, and the question I have is, are we locked on during, for that space? Is that final? Because there were some questions that we will be looking at other locations, because if we are designing for that 1.3, I want to make sure that that location is the location to go forward.
So I may turn over to Todd, but when Tony was still here, when Tony Chiatakas was still here, they evaluated other potential locations. And again, it's not just a matter of size, there's all kinds of factors that went into that evaluation, how the vehicles get in and out, all those kinds of things. And at that point, and I think in large part because not only then are you talking about construction, then you're talking about land purchase and all those others that just continue to increase the cost. So that combined with the opportunity to, again, partner and leverage our resources and knowing what we've done in the MOU that we have with Wake County is identify that, yes, we can put everything that we need, not only now, but into the future, they've done forecasting for the needs into the future, it fits on that site. So I'm going to turn it over to Todd in case I missed anything.
So I would say that we are down to that site specific, but I do want to point out that when we talk about that site, that includes the convenience center site. We are running a couple different scenarios to where our public works facility could be in the general area that it is now, or it could be closer to where the convenience center is now, and the convenience center could be closer to where our public works facility is. So we're running both scenarios, and as we finish that research, we certainly will present our findings to you.
The reason I asked was because that area is low-lying, and it has to be raised almost three to four feet up. And when I was talking, I think Benjamin is here, the aviation, when it's built, it will be built at a little bit of extra height, and that will extra, like, I don't know what to say, but it will basically make the public works facility more lower. So the entire elevation of
Stormwater issue.
Like, more, it's a flat plain right now, you know? So I just want to make sure that whole area is the right place before we invest all this money into it.
Well, that, that is why you get a design, is to
Yes.
To tell you those deficiencies or those limitations, or to actually identify the opportunities that exist. You own this property, you control it, we just talked about site control, the value of that property values in Mooresville. The reason why we landed with this becoming the site is because of the price tag in going somewhere else down on International Drive, for example. That just added to the price of $6.8 million to redo the site. So you have greater opportunities on the property you own. This is 13.71 acres you own, and there's a portion, a good portion, a fair portion of it that is usable and functional, and now you have partnership
I totally get it, I totally get that, you know? So the key is, that is a good, and the other thing Martha, you said was good, was in one way is, it's pretty much if you are saving $700,000 in the road improvement and you're putting 1.3, it's kind of a wash, it's because it's a $600,000 in one way that I look at it. So that's what my comments would be, is to make sure that the design, so design is going to bring up the building design, right, and the road improvements, and also the overall cost that would bring for what we anticipate, the 5.5 or whatever the extra cost and all that things.
Correct, Councilmember Garamella, and this may somewhat answer your question, Councilmember Wendell. When we talk about site design, that's environmental and geotech and all kinds of other things other than just designing buildings. It's the layout of the way you get in and out of the site, it's, we'll bring you back more information, but it, there's lots of moving parts to getting that prepped upfront.
And just to clarify, this design of the 1.3 million, would that also include the possible second entrance to the Cedar Fork Ballfields?
We're talking about this being in collaboration, and that really references back to what Todd said. We're talking about there-along aviation, but things may move to achieve the needs of both sets of customers.
Okay, that's
Just for clarification
Councilmember Flank, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, again, I'm not against everything, everything we're talking about, I'm for, except short of designing the building. Is that what 1.3 is for, too?
It is full design to be ready to get a construction bid.
And seeing, what I'm in favor of, everything short of that, so just kind of like we did the library, you can, this is the area it would be in, not actually do the building design, because again, that's the bigger commitment for, you're anticipating spending $5.5 million for a building, but you don't know till, again, you have to design it and then lead, and then put it out for bid. So it could come back as
We can't get you an answer on what it will cost without designing the building.
I understand, that's what I'm saying, the process is, much like we're going through now with the Aquatic Center. We've done that. What we're doing with Mooresville Carpenter, I understand that, I'm just talking to my colleagues, telling them, the only thing I'm really against is just designing the building, because I think there'll be variables changing between now and a year and a half from now that might impact that. That's all.
Understood. So I'd like to go for consensus right now on the 1.3 million to start for design, and to his point to actually include the building, design of the building. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Include the building design, please.
Okay, and I have a question, I think to answer, basically from Michael. I understand what you're saying, but the question I have is, if we take for a scenario, we take the building out, okay, and do it, it might be, say, $200,000 less, and then we put back the building, and the cost might come higher. So we go with the building design now, we may do it or not do it. You gave a good example of what happened in the past, I, you know, I was, you know, don't know about it, but at least you know exact cost of the whole project. That's what I'm thinking, that the cost overruns would not
Okay, I get it, you don't have to explain it to me, what I'm just trying to say, though, is
That's, that's my logic of what I'm thinking, that's
Okay, but you're committing to 5.5 after that, is what I'm saying, or more. And when I'm, so, for instance, we just went through this exercise with Jeannie for what reason, other than it was good, because now we're eating up all of our budget based upon what has been proposed, that's all. So you won't be able to do anything else. You won't be able to do other things that we kind of looked at at the, at the retreat, and we kind of
Well, we're looking at more things during this evening as well, and, and the big CIP, but I think right now, we're trying to lock down this first
Okay, if you wouldn't interrupt, I'd appreciate it, Mayor.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, I'm only talking for like 15 seconds and then
Okay, I apologize.
Okay.
Go ahead and finish your thought.
I'm done, I mean, almost done, so that's, that's all. I'm just trying to say, I get your points, Teesh, I just want you to understand, because we've been, I've been down this road before with, there were other sites we looked at, and if we would have committed to those, this would have not happened as we see it now. I'm committed to putting a building there, siting it, I'm just short of spending money because of the backend of 5.5 million that is going to tie the hands of councils going forward in the future.
That, that's a fair point. So it looks like we have consensus to move forward with 1.3, and we're making really good progress. As I look at this sheet, we talked about the Food Hub Phase Two, we're good with the 2.200, 250,000 in FY19, and the 1.3. Martha touched real briefly on the Green Fairview Stormwater Improvements, I'd love to talk about that real briefly and make sure that we're okay moving forward with that. It's mostly out of the Stormwater Fund and for safety. Does anyone, we'd really like to keep this moving, so if anyone has some value to add or concern, please share it, but otherwise, I'd like to go ahead and see if we can get some head nods on that one as well.
The Stormwater
Fairview Stormwater Improvements for, yeah, the 475,000 for that.
That's a safety thing.
Yes.
And again, that's just a cost estimate, it could come back double It could come back double that for all we know.
They're all cost estimates.
Yes, I understand they're all cost estimates and to only, to know, we have to sort of move forward and try to get
And this is different from the Christian Church parking lot, correct?
Correct.
They are two completely separate projects.
I want to clarify because that one could be cost overruns too.
Okay, sounds like we have affirmative head nods on those three items.
Thank you, Mayor. So that, that's really the proposed capital budget requests from a proposed CIP. If I could just add a couple clarifying points. One of the other projects that I've proposed in the operating budget, so it's not listed in this capital, is the intersection improvements at Davis and Parkside Valley. So that is incorporated into the budget. It really returns that intersection to two lefts out of Parkside onto Davis. It helps protect the people coming out of the other intersection and it is timely related to the development of Parkside Valley. So just referencing that is a proposed project in the operating budget as a capital outlay that would be managed by Kent and his department to have happen. The other Davis Drive project that Councilmember Garamella mentioned was at McCrimmon Parkway. That is from several years ago, a project that was originally envisioned to be a joint project between Morrisville and Town of Cary to enhance the pedestrian connectivity across Davis Drive. Cary made different decisions in their sidewalk program and did not support that project. And so we've been looking at it as Councilmember Garamella talked. This council has addressed the crash data at that intersection several times. Ben Howell has worked with NC DOT to address those concerns and I believe that NC DOT is working on a solution. Am I correct on that, Ben?
NC DOT is, has, I think, replaced the traffic signals that should address the crash issue. And then they, as part of that project, they are able to design new pedestrian signal system to go in there, but they're, they were not, they're not able to install it. So, but the design will be ready for whenever the installation is, whether we're, we're ready to, whether we install it or it's installed as part of an upcoming NC DOT project.
That's the one I was saying, if we go ahead, because the design work is done by them and either they do it because it's a safety that's kind of always pushing and pretty much every week we see people hitting it and especially the RTP Greenway is pretty much complete. It gives them a connectivity for them. That was what I was thinking.
Is the design ready?
That I do not know. I know they were going to work on it. It's probably not quite ready yet. And the other side of that is besides just the signals themselves and the crosswalks, there's, there would be some additional sidewalk work that would need to be done. And one thing to note for the Davis Drive, Parkside Valley Drive intersection, I believe Kent, you had included this in your project sheet, but one things we'll look at there is also pedestrian accommodations at that intersection for crosswalks to get folks between the apartments and over to that side Davis. So even if we can't necessarily do McCrimmon and Davis at this time, if we move, if Parkside Valley and Davis moves forward, there most likely will be at least one crosswalk there that would allow folks to utilize the apartment complex, internal circulation system, get back to McCrimmon.
Let staff work on getting the status of design and timing to come back and talk about at our next meeting.
Absolutely, because you can't, you can't allocate mon, you can absolutely allocate money, but you cannot build something until the design is done.
And this, this is the type of project that if we would get the design, have the ability to do it or get NC DOT to do it or somehow partner, it is one that we could bring you back. And this is why we have fund balance is just an example of a project that's reasonable, it's a one-time within your fund balance. Also want to also consider the timing of that one, of course, with another project we're doing on Davis Drive.
So I think that's great. I think this is really good. I would really love the opportunity to sort of cross your suggestions here with the ones that we just highlighted and see if there's any of those that we maybe try to accelerate, the ones that we had interest in. We just heard about Morrisville Community Park Phase Three. Was that one that we sort of highlighted as
So may I, may I please?
Yes, please.
So if you go back to my proposed, I've illustrated for you in fiscal year 2020, which is our next year's operating budget that we'll consider and knowing that is the year that we'll have to be more sensitive to our debt capacity, again, status quo without any other decisions council may make, is there is a recommendation that we would fund the design work for that project, very similar, so that you know what you want and what it'll cost you before you would proceed on that project with this project and even back to the public works facility. If circumstances changed, you may be committing, but you can defer in your planning year. That's why you evaluate your CIP every year. You update those planning years as you take on a new funding year. So, but then you'd be shovel ready to go when those opportunities arise or in a bond referendum or any of those types of things. So MCP, because it has been discussed and prioritized really by this council, it is one of the proposed projects. I've tried to illustrate how you can start layering projects in and keep things going over multiple years rather than at one at a time and still have flexibility in those future year decisions.
Now, are you saying that we're planning to make that investment in future budget cycles or would we start beginning to make the investment, you know, now in terms of looking at the design?
In my CIP proposed, the first recommended funding year for design I have is 2020, next year.
So I'm looking to my fellow council members to see if that's, if we want to try to get ahead of that a little bit more. So if we could bring up the other one side by side with this or have the listing or somehow highlight on there. The ones that are there that are highlighted for us, we like to make sure that we're maybe getting the design funding a little bit sooner so that we have a little bit more information going forward and maybe they can be part of the bond referendum bucket, for example. So the field improvements show on yours
Martha, is that page 78?
In 2021.
77 in the book, folks.
So you have design in 2021 for the Cedar Fork field improvements and those are, mm-hmm. Okay, so other people are feeling that 2021 is a good year to start that.
Yeah, I think we can delay that. I mean, it's important, but I'm looking at taking on heavy debt with the public works and we would probably have heavy debt with the Cedar Forks. So if we wait past the critical 2020, then we would have a lot more flexibility.
I would put out there that if the council is amenable to getting things moving, we could do a property tax adjustment and move things up by one year if there was interest in it. So I'm just making sure that we're all aware that that could be a possibility, not that I'm promoting it unless everyone else is.
I'm not willing to have that discussion yet.
Okay, so maybe further in our discussions.
I guess my question is, the, the money that we, on your proposal, the 2.025 million, is that the max that we have to play with, if you will? Or do we, is there additional money that we could move? Like, I mean, I would be in favor of moving Morrisville Community Park up a year, but would that mean we would have to give something else? Like, have we maxed out at the 2.025?
You have not. Well, the 2.025 is recommended out of fund balance as, as you also, we haven't directly talked about it, but the, there is an additional $3.67 million of your fund balance, which is our excess over 45, that we're recommending just move into your capital investment plan. You still have that capacity to use for cash flow, but it restricts that money for future capital projects, undesignated until you so designate them. Even with those two amounts, we're still projecting that fund balance capacity would be at about 39%. So there is capacity. I would, I would advocate, you have to look at all the decisions you might make as you start using that fund balance capacity. You can't do that in a vacuum either and you want to continue to stay flexible for other opportunities. We just talked about one, a Davis Drive, McCrimmon Parkway project. So it's all of the decisions interrelate, but there is additional capacity.
So I guess that's what, just for me, that's the kind of thing that I need because obviously, and I know we'll probably talk about this in one of our sessions when you're teaching me, but what we have to do and what we, what we can't do. So for example, I would have, if you didn't say that, I wouldn't have known that it is possible to add that to it because I was in, I was in favor of what Councilmember Garamella said, but by this, I thought we would have to give up something else. So I'm glad that that's not the case.
And it's a decision that you could make as a part of this budget or as you direct that you want to activate that project when you see how some of the other things are going?
Something on the screen, just to call your attention to, is really a scenario modeling of your debt capacity. So Martha's talking about what you're proactively doing with your capital reserves. You're putting aside that $3.6 million of money that helps you potentially get these projects or other projects like that moving in the future. Or what I'm demonstrating here with your debt capacity and what Diamond Ford has actually supported is you have future capacity to even take on debt obligation past 2020. So in Martha's plan, she's saying and suggesting, let's use our cash reserves to design the project, but allow that debt service to come on in that year you have additional capacity, which is 2021. So that's thinking strategically in CIP planning and long range planning of laying it out and using your resources and it's always more than one. It's not always just debt and that's what Martha's talking about.
And then, yeah, and then I'm going to suggest that we're, we've had a great discussion about capital, but it is a balancing act. You could, you could also fund that out of that same 3.67 that you're moving, that would be a legitimate expense that you could choose to take out of that reserve amount if you wanted to activate that project. My philosophy and approach for, I'll say, the careful and deliberate and strategic timing of the projects is all the other things we have going on and waiting for you to have your more robust discussion about bond referendums and, and those types of things and how you might want to proceed, just so that you're considering all of those factors. You don't have, I appreciate what Councilmember Rao has said and it does fit in well with the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center renovations because of the loss of tennis courts. You also have an updated Parks and Rec master plan with some concepts that you've been shared that are, that are more timely. But that's just the philosophy that I've used as I've presented what would be our first ever capital improvement plan. So it's a, you don't have to bite all the elephant off the first time.
And that being said, I, I would really like to see if the council would support moving the Morrisville Community Park phasing up to this year for the design because that's something that we asked the voters in 2012 and I think it would be really great to move that one forward for a number of different reasons. And it looks like that's within the capacity of the capital fund that we're funding. This is something that we feel is important. I don't see the need to wait unless there's a real capacity issue from staff side because we do have a lot of balls in the air. So that would be my hesitancy, but hopefully we could still at least get the design part done, but I'm, I'd love to hear from the rest of the council on that one.
Don't, designs expire. If we design in 2019 and we can't spend in 2020 and we could then go to 2021, how much aging of that design would there be?
I think that's a valid question. I think there's also making sure that we have the staff capacity, especially with a project going on across the street. Is that one that staff can do a little bit more homework and bring back an update at next week's council meeting?
I was going to say yes. The other thing though, I would want to make sure that all our ratios and percentages are, are still good, you know, moving forward because that's important when we're going to, and I think we're all committed to doing a bond, so we want to be mindful of that moving forward too. So I would ask for that, a kind of look at that too.
We'll bring back information on, on the variety of capacities and the other logistical and operational things you might want to consider if that's acceptable to the group. We'll go ahead and see about Davis Drive, McCrimmon as well, to see if there's any additional information we can bring back by next week.
Okay, so I think we got a lot of head nods on that and we look forward to hearing information about that. We said that we would just go an hour and it's been an hour and about 20 minutes and we haven't really touched on budget per se. I'd ask if the council is willing to go another 30 or 45 minutes and sort of touch on budget items now that we've sort of really given some good direction about the CIP part.
Add-on suggestion, take a couple minute break. What staff would like to get from council is what things do you want to talk about? We'd like to sort of get them up on a list, get them prioritized so that we make sure we're bringing you back the information to have that discussion. If we could spend a few minutes doing that, that would be helpful for us prepping for next week's session.
Okay, will a five-minute break be enough for everybody? Okay, it is 8:37. We will reconvene at 8:43. Thank you. It's 8:47. We're now back in session. We're going to sort of dig down into the budget a little bit and Jeannie Hooks is going to sort of lead this discussion, try to get from us what needs to be discussed so we can move forward through the next couple of weeks and the next couple of sessions, make sure that we have the information that we need to make good final budget decisions. Thank you, Ms. Hooks.
Martha, did you want to talk about these first or let's go this way? Okay, all right. So what needs to be discussed is really what do we need to put on the table to reach a consensus about adopting a budget? That's what you really have to focus on. You know, the manager's giving you a recommended budget. If you're generally good with it, or is there, or not good with it is really the question. What does it take or what do you need to talk to with your fellow council members to get good with it? What needs to change? Because you're, it's in your hands at this point. The manager's provided you with the recommendation, but there could be something that you need different. So what would that be? Put it on the table. Let's start talking about those things. We'll turn it over to you guys. So who would like to start?
Mayor Pretan Scroggins-Johnson, please.
You picked me. Okay, a couple things. Fees, there's a large section of fees and if there is significant changes, I noticed that in the fire alarm fee is now a standard 250 for every time. It used to be incremented and I understand resetting alarms and everything are expensive. I just want, just a little more background on that, not that I would change the fee. It's a good recommendation, just understanding a little bit more about how that fire service, you know, is affected and is that the right fee? Is that, is that too low? You know, that kind of thing. Also, I noticed that the police have a different fee structure for house alarms. There's like three free and then it starts to increment with that cost. So is, is the police a different kind of alarm setup versus the fire alarms? That's where I'm going. Then the other question I have is relating to the staff enhancements for fiscal year 2019, there's nine new positions and just a little bit more detail maybe on that. And I know there's detail in the budget itself, but it, it's good and the carrying cost is, you know, aligned, so.
More detail on the positions.
Right, right. Yep. That's it. Thank you.
So I got detail on positions and let me make sure that I captured this. Clarify the fee changes and really you're interested in what is the basis for that recommendation and really general understanding of what does it mean versus the police and the fire alarm fees.
Right, because public safety is very important and public safety for fire alarms is typically commercial properties. is typically commercial properties, and police could be commercial and residential.
Okay, so is it just PD and fire alarms specifically? Okay.
Yeah, it's just that, thank you.
So, Mayor Rao.
Just my initial thoughts. I don't have any, I support all of the operational requests that are being made in the budget for the police, the fire, the planning. You know, I think that, and also the addition to the technology, there's a technology analyst position. One thing I was curious about is, in the description of the position, it says that it's taking a lot of responsibilities, like increasing, you know, hardware, software, networks, service demands, DR, security, and it's for realignment of functions within department assist with the ERP and a project, and allow for more attention to both operational desire and strategic initiatives. So are we saying that this position is going to free up our existing staff to focus on strategic, or is that something we're gonna be looking at in the future? Because I still would like us to eventually have someone on our staff that's, you know, maybe, I mean, maybe that's an existing person on the staff, but just as we look, we talked a lot about technology at the retreat, and I think, and we're seeing a lot of progress in this budget with just so many innovative things, like Office 365, and just a lot more cloud-based software applications and everything like that. So that would be one question I would have. The other question is the communications director's position. I'm assuming that position would be basically a different type of position than the PIO, so it would be more like working with external partners and outreach in the community, the business, sort of what Sarah Baker was doing, but I just want to make sure, I know where that would fit in. And then, that's really all I have for now. I'm sure I'm gonna have more questions before next week, but I think the question I would pose to my council members is, you know, I went to Wake County's budget presentation last week, and it was really nice how they presented the budget in a different snapshot of all the needs of the county. And that's what I'm trying to do, is take a step away from it and saying, okay, are we doing everything we need to make sure that our citizens are safe? Because that's a big concern we hear out there now with, you know, burglaries, you know, just with everything going on, with, you know, terrible things have been happening. Do we have enough police for first response, you know, to shorten the responses to our schools, to facilities, if something bad were to happen? I'm assuming that our chief of police would say yes, but, you know, and then, in the Wake County presentation, they would, when they asked for the $2.9 tax increase, they said, you know, "We're recommending this, and this is an X percent increase on what we're spending now." But of course, it's much larger, it's a $1.3 billion budget. But that's what I would like us to do, is, like we talked at retreat, talked about strategic plan, talked about these strategic areas. Are we making the investments we need to make to make sure that we can go to bed at night knowing we're doing everything we can to keep our citizens safer? Are we making the investments in terms of sidewalks and walkability and parks and all of these things? You know, fire, you know, and then the one position I didn't see anything about, but maybe, I don't know how the administration deals with grant writing. So, I mean, because I know there's a lot of grants that come up from time to time, and is that something that we're leveraging with internal staff, or do we just work with contractors or consultants and things like that?
So let me make sure I understood what you said. You were asking about grants, how do we seek grants?
Let's say we get a grant, you know, like...
Current situation versus future situation?
Right.
We used to have one in the past that was sort of dedicated to that, and we're not doing it that way. So we assume that town staff has figured out the best way forward, but it sounds like we might be amenable to supporting that even further to leverage our funds, if that's something that might happen this year or next, or whenever you guys think.
So let me make sure I've captured what you've asked. So you want to clarify really with a couple of positions, specifically the IT and the communications director, really the purpose and the basis, and really how it fits into the organization's structure? Okay. Town council, it's really a question for your council members, are we making the right investments at the level, the service, and addressing the growth and needs of the community? Okay, and then, current practice of really how we are seeking grants, some clarification on really what that process looks like.
Okay. Are you done, Councilmember Rao?
Yes.
Councilmember Rich Link?
Oh, great, okay. Thank you for the budget, Steph. I know it's a lot of hard work, and I know we got another six weeks ahead of us, but yeah, I can pretty much, it looks pretty good. Couple questions about the vehicle fee, are we gonna, is that gonna be earmarked, dedicated somewhere into the fund as we've done in the past? Okay, that's fine.
So we will, we have some information that we'll pass out, that's gonna
Sure.
clarify that, but there's legal parameters around what you can use
Right.
for, and we've explained what the law requires.
But does that mean we can't then put it back in the fund where we did, I think, a penny a while back with the tax rate a year ago? Could it go in that fund, too?
So vehicle fees have to be used, I'll just answer this, generally speaking. $5 can be used for any lawful purpose, general lawful purpose. Anything after that has to be dedicated for transportation improvements to public streets, your public streets, not state. So there's a little caveat in the law that actually says you could also, if you operate a transit system, or are working to invest in a transit system, you can dedicate no more than $5, because the main purpose of the vehicle fee is to improve roads.
Okay, so you're suggesting increasing it $15, where does the other 10 go?
It would go towards transportation, maintenance, and
Okay, and that's fine. I just, coming forward, show me some of those projects you anticipate that it would be used for, that's all.
Okay, just show where
The public, yeah, yeah, similar project, yeah.
Okay.
And I noticed under the budget highlights, expenditures, technology enhancements for police and fire, I mentioned at the retreat, does that include 911 switching? And that's, when will that study be done? Because again, I think that's the biggest bang for the buck.
I'm sorry, riding, can you repeat that?
Okay, under technology enhancements for fire employees, the study that we're doing with Cary about switching over to their 911.
Okay, sorry.
If that could happen this fiscal year, that would be wonderful. Or an idea of what the costs are for that. And two minutes on response time is a big savings. And then, I'm sure we've done it, but show me some cases where staff's looked at the new strategic plan and how it'd fit in with the budget, just so we can show the public and everybody. We spent a lot of hard work, we used a lot of, you know, thought into that goals. If you could show me how that fits in, so going forward, we have a better idea how that all works.
Okay.
Steve, just to comment to you, remember years ago, we had this big discussion about having a position for grant rider, and it was gonna be part-time, full-time? Years ago, I'm just saying, just keep that in mind.
Lose opportunity for free revenue.
And, not tonight, but going forward, this, the capital investment program that's been proposed, that's fine, I mean, for the fiscal year coming up, but just some expectations, so the public understands, how are we gonna, does that mean somebody's gonna look at this and say, well, in 2021, the council said that they were gonna fund a dog park? So that means, I mean, is there an expectation that that's gonna happen? That's all I don't, and do other towns do it that way, too? So are you, in this, because again, we're committing to one year in budget cycle, but it looks like for CIP, we're committing to four years.
Okay, I will explain that. Thank you for clarifying. So expectation of future years of CIP?
Yeah, it's, because we've had this discussion before over CIP, and, you know, and I'm a, I brought it up before, I said, well, you know, you send the wrong signal, because it's ranked one year, it's ranked really high, then it seems politically you drop it. And then, you know, but the expectation is out there, why not do it?
Okay.
And same with the dog park, I'd use as a good example, because do we even, does staff even have an idea of, we own property, to do a dog park? I mean, it seems like we have enough land, we could just convert something to it. So $800,000 seems to like a lot of money for a dog park. Okay.
Do you want me to specifically address
Yeah, that one.
particular also?
And in context with the previous question I asked, is, how much are we locking into this? It's a four-year plan, CIP, but we're only locking into a one-year budget. Thank you, that's it.
All right, so let me make sure I got what you're asking for. So vehicle fees, where or how would it be earmarked? 911 study results, cost, could it fit in fiscal year 2019, if that's an interest? That has to do with timing, really. Show how budget aligns with strategic plan?
Certain areas, yeah, just in general, yeah, you guys pick it.
On my level?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Staff looks at it that way.
Really help our messaging as we move forward in the budget process as well.
And using it going forward, making it, enlarging in the message.
Okay. Would CIP really understand the expectation of the future years? You used the example specifically of the dog park, and you want me to kind of expand?
Well, again, yeah, because we're, it's a one-year budget, but we're committing to four years for CIP.
I would disagree with that, and I will explain why
Okay.
in the response, okay?
Councilmember Johnson's gonna go next, but I would like to just sort of piggyback on what Councilmember Schlink said about the proposed town manager CIP plan. We, as a council, need to either bless that or adjust it even the out years, because as he mentioned, it does set expectations. So we want to be really careful and make sure that we do look at that before we approve the final budget, because that is part of the final budget.
Well, again, I would question why we would approve something for four years when the budget's just one.
So I will put that in that particular question, so that you guys have a holistic understanding of the purpose and reasoning behind long-range planning, and whether or not it does or does not lock you in. And I'll say this, you are always in the driver's seat.
I agree, but we haven't done this in quite a few years, where we link the two. Maybe the answer is, maybe the answer is un-linking it again.
Mm-hmm. It's all about that terminology of what does a plan mean, or what does a program mean?
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, I agree with Michael, I think that's worthy of discussion, so I appreciate that. So I also, I had vehicle tax on my list, so that's up there. The communication director, I'd like information on that. I'm really pleased, I think this is a wonderful budget. I think it clearly shows that staff's been listening to council over the past several months, and what our concerns are, and where we're headed. And I guess it's evident in lots of places, but the one that strikes me is under development services, when we talk about all the studies that we have. So I just would like to, I'm not, and I may have missed this over the ti, I would just like to know what the outcomes are of these different studies. And I'll tell you, what struck me is, you call one transit study, you call another stormwater study, and yet, the affordable housing is affordable housing policy analysis. So I would just like to understand the differences, and what the outcomes are, and what you all are expecting, and make sure we're all on the same page from the different studies that are out there.
So that's specifically, Councilmember Johnson, affordable housing and transit?
And stormwater.
And the stormwater, okay, thank you.
Those are the three.
Stormwater, affordable housing, and transit. Okay.
And then, the only other thing, the only other comment I have to make right now, and I don't know who said it, Martha, if you said it, or Jeannie said it, but last week, you said that we have supplemental information coming. Did we get the supplemental information? Okay, I was gonna say, I thought I missed that, too. And what is that supplemental information that's
Kind of surprise.
Okay, all right, thank you. As the others, everybody kind of hit on all good topics so far.
Okay, so what are the outcomes of development studies, expectations, specifically stormwater, affordable housing and transit? You also pinged on and shared interest in the community director getting clarification, vehicle fees clarification, and you appreciate the explanation of purpose of CIP and expectations with future years.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
All right. First thing that came to my mind when I saw the one-time 5.5 mil, like, a lot of items that came in, which were good ones, but if we can roll it back into each department, because from where I come, from my corporate experiences, everything rolls into departments, like HR, you know, police, fire, public health, public works. So I know we had, you know, we did talk, I did talk to Martha, but is, more importantly, a lot of money is allocated to each department. And one place I saw, like, a lot of money is allocated for technology, which is good, for every department, you know? You see public technology being spent for purely technology, like IT department, IT funding for police, IT department for planning. So it doesn't show, at some point, I think, we have to have all this rolled back into IT department funding, because what's happening is everyone is allocating their own IT department resources, and that's not showing very well as how strategic planning, because I do recollect we had a strategic planning where it was focused that we would enhance the IT technology. And how would you roll all those decks back and tie it up? You know, if we, for example, we would enhance public safety. So a lot of small, 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 small things, what are we, we are doing for public safety. Take it, example of staff enhancements, and look at like $100,000 here, $50,000 here, $50,000 here, $50,000 here, lot of things that we are doing. So somewhere it has to show up, other than the one-time things. So for the people to see, for us to see, year after year, it's important for our department. So for me, to visually see it and to understand it, like, for, you know, engineering, what are the things that we did for them, other than the staff?
May I, because Councilmember Garamella and I talked about this, what he's referring to is cost allocation for support service departments, of which IT is a primary one, back to departments. So we do not currently do overhead allocations back to departments, but I did actually commit that that would be something on Jeannie's and my work plans, so that we could start seeing that. That's actually applicable not only for IT, but for any of your administrative-type departments and stuff. So that's a work plan item, but we'll explain more what that is in our follow-up answers.
Good thing. And the other thing is, I saw the one specific thing that struck me was the 10 solar stations in the parks. So the concept of 10 solar stations is good, but the locations of 10 solar stations was a little, I was kind of, why would we have 10 solar stations in a park? I would rather allocate solar station at a place where there's no electricity, somewhere in the middle of a trail, somewhere where there's no access to electricity, instead of saying it had Northwest Park, it had Short Street, it had, you know, Marshall, all the parks, or regular parks. I would rather have stations where there is no access to electricity. Or, you know, like, now you're, you know, allocating where there is no access. My whole thing is, when we went to the core, right, meeting last time, you usually have at strategic locations where people are going in a trail, where you don't have access to it, and you have a charging station. And the other thing, I think, Liz, you were there, and you were there, like, we had that NLC, one kind of hub, like, a thing, that this said that they would
It was a big, like, monolith.
Monolith, like, they said they would, I think, taught, you were there, too, if we can reach out to them, it's a free thing, they would support, and they would give it. All right, yeah.
Are you saying it's not free?
I don't know what it was, you know?
The thing is, there
It was advertisement or whatever, they run it, right? Like, that's Like, that, that's, that's how you can look into that. But, I thought it was Wi-Fi and all kinds of things that go into it. It was pretty cool that you can look at, it was, you can look at the directions of how to go, and if you have a transit, you know?
It's a wayfinder.
A wayfinder, that kind of thing. I thought, you know, we could tap into those resources, that if you can explore and look at some of the strategic locations to have those. And that's, that was my thought process when I looked at, when you said Wi-Fi in certain areas, you can use those locations. And, and that, those were the things. And coming back to system reset offenses, right? That was pretty hefty when I looked at the fees of $250 per, the first one itself is with the clubhouse things, right? Like, is it for the clubhouse, and what does an offense mean? You know, is it just a call-out to the fire department? Or is it, like, that-
Oh, that, that house-house, right?
No, this one, like, I said, the fire alarm system reset. So, like, who gets charged for it? Because I, I know for sure is because call, talking from, at least from Breckenridge's point of view, our rental is $250. And if you are charging $250 for a reset, is the person who's renting gets charged that $250? Or the HOA gets charged?
The owner of the building.
The owner of the building gets charged. So, how does that whole?
You have to chase them.
So, how does that whole thing work? So, I just wanted to be cognizant, so like, the-
The town doesn't have legal jurisdiction over your agreement for the rent?
Yeah, so, so our rentals have to be also appropriately changed, and that goes for several people, because this notices have to be sent to everyone who does rentals for things.
We'll expand on that, that particular question.
Yeah.
Is that all you had, Councilmember Caramello?
So, it's solar station locations, really explaining why, why we, why we picked these, and really, did we have other considerations? And I think you pinged specifically on non-electrical sites.
Yes.
Okay.
And it'd be interesting-
And then, of course, the fees.
And those, that really fits in really well with new and innovative services in our mission. So, some, go on, on a little bit of scalability of that. Is this like a pilot project that might expand? And what's the town's, what's the staff's recommendation on that? Just a little more, what's the vision for that going forward? I'd appreciate. Councilmember Wendell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm gonna look over to Jerry real quick, and shake your head no if I'm, I'm wrong. The solar stations, was that including the Wi-Fi that could tell us how many people were using a facility at any given time? Was that part of what? Yeah, so I was really fascinated in why it was in the places where we do, like Church Street and other places, was part of the ability of that Wi-Fi system was to ensure privacy, but through almost like a tokenization, would be able to determine the number of people that were visiting that park at any given time. That would give us really good statistical data. So, the, it wasn't so much the solar place where there was electricity, because I totally got that when you said it, and then it dawned on me. It was to measure the, the amount of people that are using our public facilities. And I believe it gives, I don't know all the details, but it's pretty, from what I was briefed on, it was very neat, enhanced data that could give us some very interesting things. So, the only comment I want to have is, I think, as I went through the, the budget process, and like Councilmember Johnson, I purposely didn't do the Budgetopia because I just wanted to see what everybody was gonna say, and I, I just wanted to reserve my thoughts for the, the moment that I, I had my thoughts. But, I did play with it back and forth, and I just didn't save anything in it for my own personal reasons. But, I'd say that the, the budget is incredibly progressive, I think. I think it's a, really a neat, progressive budget with some, some very exciting things in it. With regard to public transportation, if, if we're, when we're talking about transportation here, if we're talking about, like, busing and things like that, then if that's what we're gonna talk about, then I'm good with that. I had a number of folks from the newly immigrated folks from India come in and ask about, specifically about the busing. And one was actually, at, at our last council meeting, just had pulled me aside and said, you know, "We're so used to busing, and why don't we have busing?" So, I think that's really, really important. And I, I would, a lot of people in, in the area, I think, would, would benefit from that. I am compelled to ask this question, and it's, I just want to put it on the table because I was, I was asked by a group, with regard to budgeting and planning for the future. Is there a method through the budgeting process that we could quote-unquote "bank money" for a very expensive project so that when that time came, it wouldn't be a huge expense? So, constituency asked me to ask, and specifically, they were, they were talking about Crabtree Crossing Extension, if it was gonna be $8.5 million, and it was gonna be 10 or 15 or 20 years down the road, if it was possible to put a little bit of money aside every year so that when, or if that were to come to fruition, it wouldn't be a $8 million hit. So, can we bank some money to, to plan for that? That, that was one of the things that the constituency asked me to ask at the meeting tonight. And then, one of the things that I think is, is, the only other thing I'd like to consider and to discuss, if every one of us were to go neighbor to neighbor in each of our respective communities, you would find some family with, a child with severe autism, Down syndrome, blind, paraplegic, handicap, limbless, et cetera. I think we have the, we have enough parks. I would love to not have to wait for a few years to put a couple of pieces of equipment in one of our existing parks that are open-access playground equipment. I don't know what the official name for that equipment is, but I know that it's designed specifically for people with handicaps, or people who are disabled. And if we could do something like that, and if it wasn't a tremendous amount of money, I think that would be really something special that we could give to our families. I happened to go by Church Street Park this weekend, and I went back and forth twice because I thought there was a major, major event going on. And then I realized, I was telling Jerry earlier, that everybody was just playing. They were just out playing, and it was the coolest thing in the world to see probably 200 or 300 people in the park this past weekend, just have, families having fun. So, I thought, gosh, you know, if we could have some equipment that could service everybody, that would be kind of really special. So, that's all.
If I understand correctly, the Parks and Rec Master Plan had something like that in the Crabtree Nature Park area, but I guess the possibility of exploring doing something sooner, maybe in an additional site? Sounds like there's some interest in whether or not something like that could happen?
Specifically, they were just asking, like, I mean, I, I don't know how, I honestly, I don't know how it works, but I'm just talking about, like, a piece of equipment, or a couple of pieces of equipment, so it wouldn't be about buying new land or adding a new park. It'd be just putting a piece of equipment or two within one of our existing parks. That, that was what was asked of me. Because they, when, when we talked about that at the council, some folks who had children with special needs were like, wow, can we do something like that sooner? So, that's why I'm asking.
Could I ask Martha to sort of expand on the money that's going into the capital fund that you were talking about? That's sort of in the direction of saving up for future big projects to make them less impactful in the future?
Yeah, we'll provide, we'll provide more detailed of an answer, but that is what your reserves are for, is, is for, you're putting money away for some future purpose that has not been identified yet.
And we'll explain how that works. What does that mean? I'm looking at Liz.
Didn't, didn't, didn't we create a, didn't we increase our tax rate a few years ago by half the cent that went to, was that, is that transportation, I thought?
We didn't-
The Schlink tax. It was the Schlink tax.
So-
I'll take credit, yeah, give me credit.
So, everybody's asked their questions?
Let me just make sure I captured-
Apologize, if we could have Mayor Protem Scroggins-Johnson ask her questions, and then we can go on.
Actually, I started, I'm good, we're good.
So, so, Council, are you good? Okay. Method to bank funds for future projects, specifically, you were looking at, example of road, Crabtree Crossing. And I really, you know, notated that, that you're talking about reserves here, so we'll, we'll explain the mechanism and how that works and what it means. ADA enhancements for open, open access within existing parks, you're really specifically talking about equipment enhancements. Not necessarily anything super-specific on that one. And I, I did miss one of yours, which is what Martha said, cost allocation for support service departments. Your example there was IT items. So, I hope I captured what everybody has put on the table, very good.
Now, my turn.
Your turn, okay. I have this much space for you.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking at page 37, the enhanced scenario options. And those were things that the Town Manager put forth as possible things if we were to change the budget to increase the property tax rate. I'm interested in finding if there, there's appetite for the council to sort of take a couple of those as maybe à la carte that we'd use as fund balance, rather than actually changing the budget. The first one would be communication and outreach enhanced projects. Maybe if you could bring back to us what exactly that would mean, and how that would increase our ability to communicate, because engaging our community is one of our core missions, and you guys have made great strides there, and anything we can do to support that, I think, would be good. Another item would be the shovel-ready design funding. Once again, we have lots of projects in the works, and the more that we sort of know is shovel-ready, it might be good to set aside some money so that we're ready to pull the trigger on certain items when we're ready to go ahead and do that. An example would be the little park improvement that Jerry's talking about, would be an example of that, maybe. The demolition of 219 Church Street. If you can explain the cost-benefits vision for that space, that might be something that people are interested in doing sooner rather than later. And then, just for transparency, Town Council salaries. If you could sort of tell us what the proposed budget does to those, how we relate to other nearby peer municipalities? That's mostly for transparency, to see what we're doing there. And I'd like to applaud staff for bringing forth a budget that is progressive and can really get some work underway and continue what we've been working on. So, I'll let you sort of wrap up.
Have I collected your interest? So, Town Council, you're really asking about the alternative scenarios, what's council's interest in, in moving some of those forward and use of fund balance potentially with them? And actually, understanding the impact of that choice versus a tax rate increase. Did I capture that correctly?
Pretty much, the items that I mentioned are not operational and ongoing, they're one-time things.
They're one-time things.
So, that's why I think that they could be used for fund balance if the council is interested.
One-time things specifically.
Yep.
Okay, another item you had, Mayor, was shovel-ready design funding, and that's really a reserve question, and we'll clarify really what you have at your disposal now, how you can use it, and what else you could do. 219 Church Street, really want a clarification on that one, that one's pretty, pretty easy. Town Council salary, you need a comparison, for sake of transparency, and, and really what that means.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was, I meant to say that, are we gonna do anything with the Pew House? I mean, it's just, just sitting there, I didn't know if we had, I would hate for that thing to just-
There's a budget item in there.
We're doing this study.
To determine what's highest and best used there.
We'll, we'll provide more information.
That's right.
So, I'm gonna put that on the board, too, Pew House.
We are hopeful that those are the items that we need more information on to pretty much go forward with this budget as presented. So, this is really good work. We are pretty much early in the process, fairly close to being to where we need to be. We should continue to do our homework and look into this, and we're looking forward to supplemental information. Are we getting some of that tonight?
Soon as you turn it back over to me. Now, I'm beyond my allocated time, so I'm gonna take five minutes. We do have a pack-
Question, not, one statement. Like last year, maybe we can work towards trying to approve this budget before, I think, when you want it approved by?
It's, it's currently proposed for adoption on June 12th. We have a work session scheduled for June 5th. If you were to finish next week, you could adopt on June 12th and not have that June 5th work session. But, I don't think, we can't approve at our next regular council meeting, and we only have one more council meeting scheduled.
Quick thing, we have no comments yet through the portal?
We have five.
Okay, and you'll give us to those next time?
We'll give those to you at the public hearing on May 22nd.
Thank you.
And any feedback that comes through the budget drop-in session.
Rob, manager?
I'll, I'll forgive you this time. So, we do have some supplemental information. Some of it is, some of the items you've talked about. In particular, we've tried to provide some additional information about all of the staffing position requests in the base recommended budget. So, it'll at least give you some more information to work through and, and follow up with a conversation next week. So, that's one component. We've given you some generic information about our, our tax rate and the appraisal and those types of things, just referencing, I think it's important to considering what our tax rate is and where it might go as we consider bond referendums, so there's some information there. There's a little bit of expanded information. We did provide, one of the FAQs that Jeannie has is some additional information about the vehicle tax that we'll give you tonight, but we will make sure that we provide the additional information that we've heard from you next week as well. So, a lot more detail on all of the personnel requests. There are, there's some additional information in here about fire staffing in particular. There was a significant request. There is a plan in place. There's information in here, I think we'll need to talk about it next week, but at least you will have that information to have reviewed before our next meeting. One of the obligations I have to you as a council is, is letting you know how I've used lapsed salary in a report, so that is in here to fulfill that requirement. There is some additional information that will require more discussion. This is related to an update on our paid parental leave policy, and as well as the additional request that Councilmember Schlink made related to other things that you might want to consider. We've put some basic information, it will need some discussion, but there's some raw data to continue that discussion with council at the next time. We've covered a couple operating items that we think require a little bit more explanation. One is the office lease request related to the positions. And then, we, we've been working on one major multi-year project, which is our branding wayfinding gateway, so we've given you just some summary overview of what we've done, what we are requesting, and what we have left to do, just so that we have that information together, because you've seen it every year since I've been here. You've seen a, a level of enhanced scenarios in the one-cent and two-cent. Jeannie and I are proceeding that we're talking about a base budget with no tax increase, unless you alter that. But, we want you to know which way we're proceeding on that, unless you would consider different. Councilmember Colley's introduced a different perspective, which is no tax increase, but move some of those things into the fund balance, which you would have capacity to do. We'll bring you the information to do that. One of the other things that has been asked of me in the past is, well, what else was there? So, I've given you some of that information that you have not seen, that did come through for council, from council. And then, just as a part of the CIP, some additional information about bond referendums. Some of what we've talked about is in here tonight. Just again, some examples, scenarios that can help facilitate our conversation. More conversation about the capital investment program, and then, fund balance and some of those reserve things we've also talked about, including our balance in Parkland Payment and Lou, which is one of your CIP funding mechanisms that we really haven't called out that way, but we're using in some of these models. And then, you've really given us what we need, is what else you need from us. So, we really appreciate that, that is very helpful for us being prepared. But, I'm just suggesting, read it, and we'll cover the things in here that, that need more and additional clarification at our work session next week. The only other thing that I want to unfortunately make you aware of, and this is really part of our continued CIP discussion, is, is we have talked about- of our continued CIP discussion, is, is we have talked about what other things are not currently as a part of the CIP. So we've talked, Councilmember Johnson's mentioned sidewalks. We've got some discussions over land. And then the other one that really is out there is whether we're going to invest town funds in state road projects. I mentioned that in particular tonight, because I want you to be prepared for a conversation next week, which is Ben How's Quarterly Transportation Report. And, and the SPOT funding scores are in, and NC 54 is not recommended for funding in any way, shape, or form. So that is just something I wanted you to be aware of, he's going to talk about it next week, and it'll fold right into our additional discussion with budget. But it would ultimately be some policy and some CIP discussion related to that, it could involve us partnering with others as, as to solution and things, but just didn't want you to get blindsided with that next week. Jeannie also has a very short FAQ for the couple questions we got from the last time that we'll go out with this as well. Thank you.
And this project, Liz.
And a project tracking timeline, high-level schedule.
Thank you for all of this. Is this information that will be available on the budget page, budget portal area, so the residents can also see this info?
Can residents see this information? Certainly, we can.
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's fine.
I'm just so impressed about that right there.
Okay. This, this was a lot of really good work tonight. Thank you all for being here, thank you to staff for doing a great job in helping us move this forward. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Listen, favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it is 9:33, we are adjourned. Thank you.